We're on to Quaid Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. Before we recite the pledge as we do at the beginning of every meeting, I want to make sure that everybody is in the correct place. We are the Zoning Board of Appeals. We are not the Planning Board. The Planning Board is meeting in the conference room out the doors and to the left. If you were here for a Planning Board matter, then you are not in the right spot. But if you're here for a Zoning Board matter, you are in the right spot. Having said that, will now rise, please, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There are some administrative matters that I need to take care of before we actually get underway. First off, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevators. Use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. Meetings are being recorded by our Secretary Michelle for the purpose of a record, not for a verbatim transcript, and also for the preparation of minutes. In order for the minutes to accurately reflect who is saying what each time you come up to the microphone, please identify yourself and speak into the microphone so that everyone can hear you. We take up the items on our agenda in the order that they appear on our agenda. Extra items of the agenda are available on the table just inside the door. After the case has been called, the applicant or their representative will come forward to the podium, identify themselves by name, and state their address. Then they will pause, raise their right hands, and be sworn. Then they will be given the opportunity to present their case. During the presentation of the applicant's case, members of the board can ask questions, make comments, engage in dialogue with the applicant as they wish. Once that process is concluded, we'll then open the case to the public hearing portion. During the public hearing portion, there are so far three categories of speakers who have been identified. The first are those who wish to speak in favor of the application. We'd ask that those who wish to speak in favor of the application line up along the wall, come up to the microphone one at a time, state your name and your address. You do not be sworn. That's not a part of the process for the public hearing. State whatever your view is to the board, and when you're done, leave the podium and the next person will come up. After all those who wish to speak in favor have been heard, we'll then call on those who wish to speak in opposition to the application, following the same procedure. After you've either been heard, those have been heard who are in favor of the application, and those who have been heard who are in opposition to the application, we'll open it up to those who would like to talk to us about the application but don't have any particular view either for or against, which is a category that recently came up. Once that process has been completed, the applicant or their representative will have an opportunity to address the board again and address any of the comments that have been raised during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Once that is concluded, the public hearing is closed, and we will move on to the next case. Once the public hearing is closed, there's no more interaction between the audience and the board unless the board specifically requests it. After all the cases have been heard, the board will take a short recess, and following the recess, will return to deliberate each case in the order of the applicants that are still present in the room. So if the first applicant has left, the second applicant is present, we would take the second case up first, and we'll continue in that order through the agenda for those applicants who are present. Then we'd go back up to the first case and take the cases for the applicants who have left. There's no input allowed during the deliberative portion after the break. If you wish to know what the decision is and you've left and you can't catch it on TV, you can call the Planning and Zoning Department tomorrow morning after 9:00, and the staff will be glad to tell you what the decision was. Before we get underway, we have a letter from Brad Huber, who was appointed to serve as the alternate member of the board, resigning his position. I understand he's taken a position with the, either directly or indirectly with the town, and therefore felt that it was a conflict to continue, and so we thank him for his service. And I understand that in August, we'll have need for an alternate member, so hopefully the town board will have secured an alternate member for us between now and then. Also, with respect to, I see we have quite a number of people here. My guess is that you're not here for fences, and we don't have any chickens on the agenda tonight. So I'm assuming if you're here for the Densmore hearing or the Lighthouse hearing, I will tell you that the environmental impact studies for both of those projects are not yet finalized. The city of Rochester, I understand, has asked for an opportunity for further input with respect to Lighthouse, and the environmental impact study has not been completed for Densmore. They appear on our hearings, on our hearing tonight, so we, if you're here to speak to those, we will give you the opportunity to do so. Understand, however, that no decision is going to be made tonight, and we have had hearings in the past with respect to both of those cases, so we are generally familiar with the arguments. So all we'd ask is, in the interest of time, is that you confine your statements to something new or something sensational but brief, and not repeat the same thing that we've heard from the three or four people who are in front of you. Having said that, we'll call the first case. Oh, also, we are not imposing a time limit on speakers. However, if you get repetitious, if you wander off what the relevant topic is from our perspective, I reserve the right to tell you that we've heard enough and have you wrap it up.
Mr. Chair, do you want to let anybody know about the first item on the agenda?
Oh, the first item on the agenda has been postponed to August 1st by the applicant. So if you were here for the driveway on St. Paul, we're not going to be considering that tonight.
Thank you. So, starting with the first item on the agenda would be ZB 1607-2, upon the matter of request by Maria Kinsaya for an area variance to install six-foot-high side yard fencing exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 82 Titus Avenue in an R1 residential district.
My name is Marie Siaka. I live at 82 Titus Avenue.
Do you swear that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
So I am here tonight requesting an area variance for 82 Titus. I'm proposing to install six-foot white vinyl fencing from the rear of the east side of the property, along the back, and continuing along the side of the property where the side of the garage begins. I'm proposing that for the following reasons. I'd like to match the fencing on the west side of the property in the backyard, and also I'd like to extend the allowable six-foot fencing from the backyard through to the side fencing. Currently, the town code doesn't permit more than four-foot fencing from the rear of the foundation to the front. So the extension of the six-foot fencing in the side yard next to the garage will make the height of the fence consistent and allow me to have safe access to my side yard, given the presence of active dogs in the adjacent property. I've informed-
For the ones who are standing on the fence to greet you in photos?
Yes, they are, yes. And I've informed the owner of that property, and there, he and his wife are both fine with the fencing, as are the neighbors across the street and on the other side of the property.
Are you going to take out the bushes that are between the front of the house and the side where you're putting the fence?
There aren't any bushes to remove where the fence is going to go in.
There was something that was hanging over there that made it really tough to even see.
Oh, that one tree, yes. The fence will stop there at that corner.
So it'll really be tough to see from the front with that?
Right, yes, it will.
Yeah, okay.
There are no changes to the neighborhood character. There's no adverse effect on the space or the environment.
Anyone have any questions or comments for the applicant?
The fence, the fence is not going to go towards your house. It's just going to stay along the fence line?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so from, from the road, you won't see a tall fence. You'll just see the, actually, the bush will be covering that end of the fence.
Yes, it will. There's going to be no return to my property, yes.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak against this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about dogs, fences, and the need for both to coexist? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that case and move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you, Ms. Siaka.
Thank you.
Next case is case number ZB 1607-3, upon the matter of request by Rosemarie Sprague for an area variance to maintain a six-foot-high side yard fence exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 302 Orland Road in an R2 residential district.
Good evening. My name is Rosemarie Sprague. I live at 302 Orland Road.
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
I am requesting, I am requesting a side yard variance for a six-foot-high fence exceeding the height of the four-foot regulation for the town, the code.
What was the height of the fence that was previously there? Do you know?
It was higher than four feet. I don't know what it was exactly.
Did you get a permit for the fence before you started installing it?
No, I did not.
That would probably explain why you're here then, right?
Right.
All right. We have repeatedly emphasized that we are a board that generally grants permission and not forgiveness.
Yes.
All right.
I've heard that.
All right, so having said that, if you could tell us about the need for the fence, why you didn't check to see if you needed a permit, that would be helpful.
Yes, I did consult with two people, two contractors, and I did not check the code. But both of them said, since I was replacing in kind the same fence, that I could just put up the, exactly what was there, and that's what I proceeded to do.
Were they fencing contractors?
They were, yep.
And at some point after the meeting, will you give their names to the Planning and Zoning Department so we can notify them that in fact-
Yeah, I actually had, yeah.
... permits need to be obtained?
Yes.
And hopefully, at some point, the town board will-
Because-
-give consideration to an ordinance that finds fencing contractors who install fences without getting permits or having the homeowner be made aware of the need for one.
Yeah, I did replace the entire yard with this, with actually a board-on-board fence versus a stockade fence that was there, but it was, the yard was completely fenced in before, and so I was just replacing exactly where the fence was and with, with the brand-new fence. I also brought a couple pictures. If you wanted to pass those along, I don't know for those who didn't see it. This is the west, it's the west side of my house, and it shows the fence, and it shows the shrubbery that's in front. They're very tall arbbs that are in front of the fence, so you really don't see the fence from the street, so it really doesn't impact other neighbors. My neighbor, who is on the west side of me, is very happy about the fence. He's happy that it's a new fence. He's happy with the way it looks, and they use their driveway, and I think I stated that in the letter already, they use their driveway as a patio, and so they're out in that area all the time with their children and their dogs, and so it gives privacy to both people.
And it does look nice.
Sorry, I just want to clarify to make sure everyone knows. So when you purchased the property in 1992, it had a fence of the same kind, and you've just replaced what was there when you purchased the property?
I did.
Thank you.
There's a letter in our packets, I think it, these are the neighbors you're talking about, the Schuler's?
Correct.
And they live to the, to the-
On the west side, yes.
-side that's affected.
Yep.
And they're stating they have no problem.
Yes, they're very, they're in fact very happy with the fence.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Well, again, I just want to make the comment that, that the bushes from the road completely cover the look of that fence from, from the street view.
Yeah, they do.
Okay.
I mean, it's always, they've, they've been there since I moved in in 92 also, the same shrubs, so.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm assuming Mr. LaPerry was referring to the, to the, oh, the thought that when you can soften a look by putting some growth in there, it's always a good idea. Is that right?
Well, yes, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that's a good reason to do this in all cases, but in this particular case, because it was hidden in the first place, and now it's still quite hidden-
Yeah.
-from the street view, it doesn't, sometimes when you have those tall fences on the side of the home, it looks like one big wall of the house as you drive by it. In this particular instance, it's nicely shrubbed out in front of it. The whole, the whole look is very nice, so it's, it's really hidden, and the only people that are affected in the neighborhood would be the people directly to her west or to the side there, I believe it's the west side, but, and they are okay with it, because they also are enjoying the privacy.
I thought the same thing. I thought it looked very nice when I had to see it.
Did you, you got to see it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who would like to talk to us? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sprague.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1607-4, upon the matter of request by Pavel Kurick for an area variance to install a four-foot-high ornamental front yard fence exceeding maximum permitted height in linear footage on premises 3317 St. Paul Boulevard in an R1 residential district.
Good evening, board members. My name is Pavel Kurick with address 3317 St. Paul Boulevard.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Currently, I'm looking to finish the fence that I originally obtained a permit for. The side I have to finish for is the south, east, and west side. It's considered, it's really the side of the house, but it's considered as the frontage of St. Paul. I did have some pictures and examples of other properties on St. Paul that do have fences, and on the second page, it's already of the current fence that I have installed. I haven't finished it, but that's what I'm, the variance. Here's one more. Here's one more if you'd like.
You said you received a permit for the fence?
Yeah, for majority of it.
Would they tell you that there was a portion that you needed the variance for, and that's what you're-
Correct, correct, that's why I'm here.
All right.
And the height is four feet on the fence.
So, Mr. Chairman, the code for fences in Town Veronicoy allows, I think, a three-and-a-half-foot fence, right?
It does. I believe that's correct, yes.
And yet, most manufacturers make fences that are four feet high, right?
That seems to be the general-
Yeah.
... standard in the trade, yes.
So we have to go through this, this variance routine, basically, for all these people that want to put four-foot fence up, which is probably less expensive and usually looks good and so on. I think we should have the town change that.
I think that we've made that recommend, suggestion, but perhaps not strongly enough in the past. Perhaps we can make it a little stronger, because it seems to me that we spend a lot of time over six inches, and it would be pretty expensive to cut each panel down, we've been told in the past.
On this application, sir, just to make sure I understand it, the front yard for the code is actually your side yard. Is that correct?
Correct.
And it's right on the corner of St. Paul and Belcota, which is a-
Correct.
-busy neighborhood.
Yeah.
And that's technically your front yard, but when you're looking at the house, it's to the side.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And I see you've also cut down, like, 90% of the bushes that hid the house from view-
Yes, I did.
-if you purchased it, yes. Do you have children or dogs that you anticipate using the fenced-in portion?
Children, we have not our own children, but a lot of times, we have guests come over.
So safety is a factor that you're taking into account, is that right?
Yes, very.
I also noticed, although it's not in front of us, that you have five car garages.
Correct. Only one car, though.
Which was one car. There's some other people near you who want larger garages. Maybe you could work something out with them.
Is it, is the fence something that you made or-
Yeah, it's a custom-built cast-iron fence.
Okay, so it wasn't one that you purchased?
No.
So you custom-made it at the four-foot level?
Correct, but all the, all the spikes and everything-
Which could have been custom-made at the three-and-a-half-foot level.
Well, all the spikes and everything was sold at the four foot. So it was from a fence company that currently sells all the supplies for all the spindles and anything else you need.
The fence is gorgeous. I mean, I, I, matter of fact, the gateway go into the sidewalk, it's all very nice-looking. My largest concern is it is, and I've mentioned this before on other fences, and some of the ones that you've showed pictures in that we've approved have a top to the fence so that it is not a danger to anybody who might fall off a bicycle or go against that fence. This fence looks like it's a lot sturdier than most, and it also looks like it's dangerous. I, I, I'm not a fan of the prongs at the top. Is, I mean, seeing as how you custom-made it, is there any possibility to put a cap on those prongs all the way down?
No, that's not a possibility. The only caps that are going to be going on it is on top of the posts themselves, but, I mean, the fence has a, like, a three-foot section, three, three-and-a-half feet going down into the ground, and it's all concreted in, so I mean, it's not, the fence is not going anywhere.
Well, that's not my point. The point is not the fence is going to go anywhere, it's just somebody were to fall against it.
It's a, I mean, I got a three-foot section, three foot away from the sidewalk, and I understand what you're meaning, but-
If I could ask counsel, is there anything in the town code that, you know, impacts or speaks to the top of the fence? I mean, the only thing is the length and the height.
Yeah, we've looked at this before, and there's, there's no provision in the code that would address Mr. LaPerry's concern with respect to the, the top of the fencing and the treatments that are up there. You know, I think your point's well taken, and maybe the applicant can do something about it, but that wouldn't necessarily be a basis on which we could approve or deny.
I, in my opinion, I would, you know, be much more happy if there was a, a bar put across, you know, welded to the top of that, all the way across, to make it look, look nice.
Not, not only the security I was going for on the fence, the other thing was the character I was going to tie in with the house, and that's, that's what really gives it the value, too. And I mean, I, I mean, a pole going through the top would just defeat the whole purpose of the fence, as in-
Yeah, again, I understand what you're looking for, and I just show, voice in my concern.
No, I understand, and I respect that, and I was, that's why I printed out the other copies of, I mean, the other neighborhoods that-
Right, and most of them have got bars on the top. There are a few older ones that are the short wood, the shorter wooden fences. Again, but the, most of the metal ones that are going up now have a, a top bar that covers over any, anything pointy, pointy.
Or they just have a flat top on the pole.
I understand.
That's why, I mean, it looks like your fence is very sturdy. It does look like you did it homemade or whatever, but it looks good. I, again, kudos to you. It looks nice, but I just, had you come in ahead of time, well, you know, we might have had more conversation on, some input to it. Again, in the code, you're right, it's not something that it, that is not allowed, so it's just my opinion.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Kurick, just one question. On your application form, with respect to the maximum linear footage permitted, it's 32 per code. Your request is 176 square feet. I'm assuming you're meaning your variance request is linear feet.
Correct, linear feet, my apologies.
Are you going to have a gate at the driveway?
Uh, no, no, no gate. No, there's no gate there.
Because I noticed you continued the fence.
No, it's just for the flow.
Oh, okay.
No, there's no gate.
Everything looks good there, by the way.
Thank you.
Coming along nice.
Very good. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Step right up.
My name is Paul Tessie, and I live at 3321, directly north of 3317. I've lived there for 31 years, and for the last 25 years, I've seen the total deterioration of their property until it was purchased by Pavel, and the things he's done to date have been incredible. It's restored the integrity of, of our section of the neighborhood, and I saw the pieces of the gate that they've installed so far, and I think it's great. I think it adds character to the property, and quite frankly, I can't wait to see the finished product when everything is done. Having lived next to the disaster that that house was for the last 25 years, what I think's been done is wonderful, and I would love to have you guys approve it and have it finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Or anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing and move on to the next case. Thank you, Mr. Kurick.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1607-5, upon the matter of request by Daniel and Judith Mayer for an area variance to reconstruct the front stoop/entrance with less than required front setback on premises 52 View Crest Drive in an R1 residential district.
Hello, board members. I'm Dan Meyer from 52 View Crest Drive, and I'm-
If you could raise your right hand, Mr. Meyer, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Um, when, we've, we've lived at 52 View Crest for six, going on seven years, and in that time, the front, the front porch and steps is deteriorated. It's made up of concrete steps with slats of, I won't say two-by-four, but wood over them, and the concrete has deteriorated. It's like pulverized, it's, it's like dust, and the, the wooden slats have just become unsafe to walk on. And for the last year, we've had the, the whole area cordoned off so no people can even use the stairs. Now, my wife's son, my stepson, is, is, is a good, good man for these types of projects, and he's gonna, he's gonna, he's gonna put in, I can't go into detail of the plans, but it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna take care of the safety issue to refurbish the, the whole front, and aesthetically, our neighbors are all for it because it doesn't look appealing at all the way it is in its disrepair.
I assume it's going to be fairly close to what you've attached to the application. I assume it's going to be fairly close to what you've attached to the application, though?
Oh, exactly what we've had attached.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. I don't have any notes.
That's all right.
My wife, my wife left them home, and my stepson has all the plans, and...
All right, just when you said you couldn't go into detail, I was hoping that you didn't mean you were changing-
Oh, no, I have nothing to add.
Okay, all right.
Nothing to change.
Any questions or comments?
If I do understand these drawings, it seems to me that this new deck is going to cover pretty much the current existing staircase. It's just that the staircase comes off of the front of the house, and the house as it sits is exactly thirty feet, so anything off the house would require a variance.
Right, because it's within that forty feet.
So with, just to replace what you have essentially would require a variance?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Yes, you're right.
And my comment is, sooner the better.
Is this gonna be done like and pressure-treated?
Yes, pressure-treated and painted.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about it? Seeing none, we'll close the case, move on to our next case. Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB one-six-zero-seven-six, upon the matter of request by Corey Jabod for an area variance to install a six-foot-high front yard fence on a vacant lot exceeding maximum permitted height and with less than required front setback on premises one-seven-zero Pine Hill Drive in an R3 residential district.
I'm Corey Jabod, I reside at one-sixty Pine Hill. I'm here because of one-seventy.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
In your letter, you make reference that if you were to combine the properties, there would be no variance required, but because of financial reasons, you don't want to do this.
Yeah, that's correct.
I'm curious as to what that is an indication.
Well, I, as of right now, that vacant lot, I own mortgage-free. The house I have a mortgage on. If I were to combine the two, the lot would go onto the mortgage, and then, God forbid, I were to default, then I'd lose both instead of just the house.
Okay. I was curious.
I would ask counsel, is that accurate, that you could have a six-foot-high fence if this were one contiguous parcel, based on the drawings? Because I don't know if I understand that logic.
I think, to your point, Mr. Polino, I think a portion of it would be permitted as of right. I thought the same thing. I think that front section would not be, where it's adjacent to the house.
So on the, on the drawing?
Mm-hmm.
The part that is, you know, covered in hatch marks?
Mm-hmm.
That part, as far as I can tell, because it's in front of the house, that would not be allowed to be six feet.
That would not be.
It would be the three-and-a-half feet.
It would be three-and-a-half, correct.
Open type, not stock eight.
Correct.
Even if it were connected as one parcel?
Yeah, it wouldn't make a difference.
Thank you.
But this is a corner lot, and I think our ordinance says that the front of the house, for purposes of-
Is Mallard Drive?
...restrictions, is the shorter side, which-
Would be Mallard Drive, then?
Mallard Drive.
Okay.
Even though his mailing address is Pine Hill Drive, isn't that right?
I was told that by the, maybe that when we filled out the application.
Okay.
Because I-
The shorter side would be the front.
You only, you only own fifty feet on Mallard, right? And then it comes-
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
Comes back, and then you go back, you've got like a dog leg.
Yeah, it's an L shape.
L shape.
Yep.
Lot.
Yes.
All right. So for the purposes of the code, the Mallard Drive would be the front.
Would be the front, yes.
And then you wouldn't need the variances but for the fact that this is a separate lot.
A separate lot, yeah.
Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Chairman.
And the only fencing that you're proposing is what's hatched on the survey map that you attached.
That's correct. The rest of the yard is already fenced, and I just got a dog, so I'm trying to-
You don't want to continue that fence on the east side a while so that you don't look at that blue house?
I would love to.
Man.
They're actually starting to chop down some of the debris there, so that's a plus.
What kind of fencing is the rest of it? Is it chain link?
Chain link, yes.
This is gonna be a wooden-
Yeah.
Fence, right, to give you some privacy?
Privacy from the road.
And I should note that attached to your letter in support of your application, you attached a letter that's been signed by a number of your neighbors, four of whom live at one-sixty Mallard Drive, one at one-sixty-nine Pine Hill, one-seventy-seven Pine Hill, one-seventy-eight Pine Hill, two-forty Pine Hill, two-twenty-five Pine Hill, two-fifteen Pine Hill, two-oh-three Pine Hill, one-twenty-one Mallard, one-eighty-one Pine Hill, and one-forty-five Pine Hill. And you've shown us, you've also attached a copy of the fence that you, or a picture of the fence that you intend to put up, right?
Yes.
I would note, I would note, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe that the letter that is signed addresses an increase in the height of the fence. I think it just talks about replacing the chain link. And the current chain link, is it the six feet or is it four feet?
The current, the one, the chain link that I took out is four feet, yes.
The way it, the way it looks on your, on your property map is that you're gonna take this six-foot fence out from your garage, the corner of your garage, right?
Yes.
And you're gonna then bring it out, I'm not sure, how many feet, maybe four or five feet?
That area right there would be a gate-
Okay.
-to get to the backyard.
And then you're gonna bring it forward to Pine Hill Drive?
Yes.
Six-foot high, and then across Pine Hill Drive, just the setback, and then all the way back to the back of the lot and around. Is there a reason you're coming all the way forward to Pine Hill Drive? That, to me, looks, I mean, if I lived on Pine Hill Drive, I wouldn't want to see that fence all the way, it's like, in that particular lot, it's a front yard lot, and you're putting a six-foot-high fence all the way out to the road.
Well, I have raspberry bushes that, where the three, I'm not gonna exceed the three-foot setback that's required.
Right.
So it's gonna be right, right in front of those raspberry bushes, and as of right now, all the deer eat my raspberries.
Well, and I can appreciate that, but again, I don't see the reasoning other than protecting your raspberry bushes, that you need a six-foot-high fence all the way out onto that, all the way out by the road. I think that you could, I mean, if we were to approve this, I think at best, we would, I even would like it setback from the garage, maybe four feet from the corner of the garage, and have it come across. It would still give you quite a bit of enclosed yard, and it would be aesthetically pleasing from the road from Pine Hill Drive, as opposed to having some big fence all the way across up by the road at a not-corner lot. This, you own a corner lot, but this one lot in is not a corner lot, and what would prevent anybody, the next-door neighbor to the right of that saying they want to put a six-foot fence all the way out to the road on a front yard fence? Because technically, that's a front yard fence on that lot.
The house next to me is vacant and pretty-
Well, I understand, but at some point, somebody might do something with it, but it, it's still, as far as neighborhoods go, it's still something that I don't like to see out that far. I mean, I guess I understand, but I would, I would, you know, like it back from your garage, from the front corner of your garage. I'd like it back five feet, four feet, five feet, and then come across if I was gonna approve it.
I mean, that, that picture's a little deceiving. You're still, you're probably eight-plus feet away from the actual road.
I understand, but I still think it's too far forward. No matter, no matter what, I don't think a six-foot fence should be, should be out by the road.
I would, I would, I would just like to note that if it came down to six foot or the variance to put it ahead of the foundation, I'd much rather have ahead of the foundation to protect my raspberry bushes and so on.
Okay.
Know what I'm doing, because I'm at, because there's-
The second option.
It's two different variances.
Right.
If you don't, you know, I'd much rather have a four-foot fence that takes up that entire, that gives me the full use of my yard instead of cutting it down than a six-foot fence and cutting a portion of my yard. Is it all, I mean, for all intents purposes, that's my backyard.
So you'd rather have a four-foot fence further forward than a six-foot fence back?
Pushed back, yeah.
All right, so if we did change it and said you come out from the side of the garage, five feet back, four feet, with the, with a gate, come up toward the road four feet, down the, down, across the front four feet, and then take it back four feet to, parallel to where, five feet back from the garage, and then the rest could be six foot around the back of that lot?
Well, I'm not, I'm not doing anything around the back. The back is-
Already done.
It's already fenced.
Okay.
It's just the, just the front area there that's, that's hatched out that I would be installing a fence at.
And, yes, yeah. I assume that you also would have no issue with a condition on any variance that we might grant one way or another, that it is only allowed for so long as that lot is sold with the other lot and not developed, right?
Yeah, I don't plan on ever developing that lot.
Oh, but you could sell it to someone else who planned it.
Yeah, this is, I, I bought the lot, or I bought them together because it's, the way the house sits and everything, it's kind of pointless. The house, it, I don't know how to explain it, but the house, the house, the house needs that lot.
Right, I understand.
It does.
I didn't get out, I saw, I saw pictures of it, but I didn't, this fence is not already installed. You're-
No, no, it's not.
So the fence to the one side of that lot, all right, we'll go back to the map, to the Pine Hill side, to the right side of that lot, there's a fence there right now, right?
Yes, along that side, along the back, and along the other side.
And that's a four-foot-high chain link?
Yes, yes.
And you're not replacing that?
No, I'm not. The, I, there was a chain-link fence in, in the front, but it was rotting and deteriorated when I bought the house.
Right.
So I tore that out.
So there's still a chain link on the right, on the right lot line, all the way back four feet and four feet in the back?
Yes.
Right? All right. Now, does he, he still needs, even if, even if we make it a four-foot fence, he still needs a variance for fencing on the, on the lot, right?
Actually, the, the code states on a vacant lot, the fence can be, is, is four feet.
Okay.
So you don't need a variance to put up the four-foot?
To put a four-foot, no, I do not. But I would still need the front setback variance to, to put it where I would like to put it.
All right. So to clarify, he doesn't need a variance with respect to height, but he would still need the variance to maintain the average front setback requirement in that area, which is twenty feet?
Well, technically, he'd need, it's a three-and-a-half-foot fence that's allowed.
It's a four-foot fence.
Is it? Okay.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next case. Thank you, Mr. Jabod.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB one-six-zero-seven-seven, upon the matter of request by David Shaheen for an area variance to construct a plus-or-minus three-hundred-and-sixteen square-foot addition exceeding maximum permitted lot coverage and with less than required front setback on premises five-six-nine Rock Beach Road in an R1 residential district.
Hello, I'm Dave Shaheen. I live at five-sixty-nine Rock Beach Road.
Raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, basically, we're looking to do an addition onto our house. We've never had a dining room in the house. We have a very small kitchen, no dining room at all. We're down on the end of Rock Beach, towards St. Paul, where there's, you know, a lot of smaller homes, et cetera. So we're requesting two variances. One is for lot coverage. The reason we need the lot coverage variance is that currently, we're already at twenty-six percent lot coverage, so to do any kind of addition at all, even if we wanted to add two square feet to the house, we'd need a variance. And the other one is a front setback variance. We're currently thirty-seven-and-a-half feet to the street. However, of course, that's not how many feet it is to the property line. It's twenty-four feet to the property line. Now, there's no sidewalk on our side of the street. I know a lot of people go by the rule of thumb, well, wherever that sidewalk is on your lawn, that's where your property ends. There's no sidewalk on our side of the street, so, you know, we are back thirty-seven-and-a-half feet. With the addition, we'd be back thirty-two-and-a-half feet from the street, but again, it's, the property line is where we would need the variance from because we won't be far enough from the property line. Other than that, I mean, it won't change the character of the neighborhood. The houses on either side of us are both closer to the street than us. We're back a little ways. There's a house five-thirteen Rock Beach Road that's closer to the street than where we're gonna end up if we do a five-foot addition forward. And again, we're going five foot forward and then fifty inches westward. We don't need, you know, that won't affect the setback going westward, however, that's where the lot coverage variance is still. In effect, I've spoken to my neighbors, and pretty much, I've got all the ones near us, like across the street, diagonally across the street, diagonally the other way, on either side of us, and even farther either way, we've, I've got at least ten signatures, if you guys want to look at them. And it spells it right out, says that, you know, we'd like to move five feet closer to the street and then fifty inches westward, and that will give us finally a dining room. My wife has been very patient. We've lived there for fourteen years. She's never had a dining room, so. Other than that, I have some pictures where you can kind of see that the houses on either side are considerably closer to the street than us. And I do have a rough rendering of what the addition will look like. Donna suggested that if we brought something like that in, it might help you folks to visualize it. So it's basically a pictures of the house and then a little computer drawing that our architect did of kind of what it's gonna look like in the future. So I'll pass these around, and as I say, some of the pictures are just a good view of the front and the side, and then some of them, you can see where the house on either side is closer to the street than us. And that's why I say it won't change the character of the neighborhood at all, won't have an environmental impact on it, any kind of derogatory environmental impact. I think that's all I have to say about it.
Just for the record, the applicant has passed around signatures from Mary Stein at five-fifty-five Rock Beach, Barbara Kleeman at five-forty-three Rock Beach, Rob Lindsay at five-eighty-one Rock Beach, Martha Swaisen at five-seventy-five Rock Beach, Patrick Drexler at three Batto Terrace, Lori Salpa Arno at thirty-six Anchor Terrace, Rosemary Houlihan at twelve Anchor Terrace, Paula Farsacy at one Anchor Terrace, Michelle Callan at thirteen Anchor Terrace. at, uh, 1 Anchor Terrace, Michelle Callan at 13 Anchor Terrace, and William Gautier at 4 Anchor Terrace. And I think those were all, some of those were also attached to the application, correct?
I did attach a few initially, and then we went out, asked a few other neighbors, and that, one neighbor said that they were against this, so we basically covered just about everyone within 200, uh, feet of us, because I was told that's how far this, you know, neighbors really have a concern, uh, within 200 feet.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
How long have you been without a dining room?
Uh, 14 years, we, we moved into the house in 2002.
Now, you said your wife wants the dining room, what, what about you? Do you want the dining room too?
I, I would like it too, for sure, you know, I'm, it would be nice to, you know, our kitchen's very small, um, so it's cramped eating in the kitchen, we, sometimes we'll end up eating in the living room with tray tables, you know how that is when you don't have a big kitchen, you don't have a dining room, so, uh, and I, I'm also a firm believer, happy wife, happy life, so, but I would like to have a dining room for sure, that's a good question.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone who would like to talk to us about any aspect of this application? I think your wife is coming for it, I'm assuming she's going to speak in favor of it.
I hope so.
I'd like to just say a few words, um, this is, um, in the Somerville White City area, and we'd like to just add to the, um, beach charm of the neighborhood, um, we're going to, uh, hopefully, uh, add to the exterior, uh, gingerbread trim, uh, to the roof line and the porch trim, uh, make it very charming, uh, or, and/or, uh, uh, an artsman, craftsman feel, we're working with the architect on, on that. Um, I also have an, uh, four-year interior design degree from Michigan State University, so, um, I've got lots of ideas to, um, improve, um, the home. I've been waiting, like we said, for 14 years to, um, come to some agreement on, on what to do with the home, um, so, very excited to, uh-
The architecture's drawings that we have are very nice, looks very nice.
Thank you.
Alright, anyone else wish to speak? Alright, we'll close the case pertaining to this matter and move on to the next application.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1607-8, upon the matter of request by Jeff Thomas and Catherine Calicchio for an area variance to construct a detached garage exceeding maximum permitted square footage on premises 67 Sagamore Drive in an R1 residential district.
Your name and address, please.
Catherine Calicchio, 67 Sagamore Drive.
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Good evening, I'm here this evening to seeking relief to exceed the square footage allotment for garage space. I wish to thank the board for their valued feedback regarding our first proposal. We have taken your concerns under respectful consideration, rethought our plans, and have a new proposal before you this evening. I wish to explain to the board the necessity behind this request, as well as the uniqueness of my property that not only makes this request possible, but also the more aesthetically pleasing option than the allowable 30 by 30, 900 square foot structure. As part of my application, I provided you with photographs of my current unusable, grossly deteriorating two-car attached garage that is clearly unsafe for even my children to walk through. My request this evening is to attach a smaller 384 square foot, single-car garage to the home due to family, uh, situations, while tucking a two-car 729 foot, square foot detached garage in the back corner of my three-quarters of an acre lot, as seen in the provided pictures. I have also provided an architectural drawing of what the larger structure would look like to show that our commitment to not only the character of the neighborhood, but the design of my current home. As you are well aware, current zoning laws allow for a 30 by 30, 900 square foot attached garage. Even though this is allowable, it's not an acceptable option, as being attached, it would sit awkwardly in the center of my yard and obstruct the view of both of my neighbors, therefore negatively impacting the character and design of my home and the neighborhood. I need you to reinforce that I am in no way looking to buil- build a storage facility on my lot. Instead, I'm requesting the opportunity to be a responsible homeowner in the neighborhood and community that I have loved and lived in my entire life. I fully realize and am committed to following any EPod requirements that arise from the detached garage. This proposal will not negatively alter the essential character of my neighborhood, but instead enhance it. My family and I look forward to the possibility of adding value not only to my home, but that of my neighbors. And I wanted to make sure that my request was not an unusual one, so I spent some time searching, uh, the meeting results available online, and I've got to say, I am shocked at the number of chicken requests that this town actually receives, but I did find three requests, two of which for a larger garage space, two of which were, that were granted, one for a property slightly larger than mine at 1 acre, and one that was granted for a property of .22 acres. And then there was one that was actually one of those situations, Mr. Hemen, that you brought up, where somebody was asking forgiveness after they had built a too-large structure. That is absolutely not what I'm looking to do today.
What addresses were those three that you?
Um, I have them right here. One is 472 Joseph Street in, um, August 5th, 2014.
And that was for what?
That was for, like, construct an additional detached garage exceeding the minimal, maximum allowable height and number, and less than required setback. So that was both size and where it sat on the property. And then another one on Willow Creek Lane, which is only a .27 acre lot on 62 of 2015, that again, construct a garage addition with less than required setback, and again, exceeding the maximum allowable garage width. So again-
The width of the garage or the square footage of the garage?
Allowable width, and maximum allowable garage width and setback.
Alright, but not the square footage?
I'm not sure, I don't, I can't see the details.
I think Willow Creek is the one that was off of, uh, over by the bay, that then they came back for the-
It's not by the bay.
No, off of Titus.
Hmm?
Off of Titus by Colman.
Right.
Oh, it's off of Titus?
Yes, it's off Titus Avenue.
Oh.
Um, but again, I've provided pictures of the yard, and our yard is quite unique. Uh, most yards on Sagamore Drive on my side of the street have cliff. I actually have a lot of usable land, um, and the fact that tucking the garage towards the back would be less obtrusive than placing it as my current garage sits clearly in the center of my yard. I wish that I had the ability to build it all back, tucked in the back, as a 900 square foot option, but I need a detached garage, um, or, and, and attached garage to my home. I've also provided, I have with me tonight, they had hoped they could be there, but they could not, my two most, um, direct neighbors have written letters of support for the proposal.
Can you explain your, you just said that you need a detached garage as opposed to-
No, I said, I'm sorry, I said I need, I need it, a small attached garage.
Right. And why can't the attached garage be 900 square feet?
It can, but what I'm saying is it would be so, it would be large and obtrusive. If you've been to the property, you can see where it sits, and it would literally be in the sen- center of my yard, with then usable space behind it. It's, again, many of the garages on Sagamore is you, you pull back, the garage is actually along the back of the house, it doesn't sit. It's, it's a strange phenomenon on Sagamore Drive, but mo- you, most, most of us have to turn left into our garage.
But the, the current garage, according to the picture that you submitted, is 24 by 26.
Yes.
And the 24 is, which, is that-
Deep.
24 deep, so it extends 26 feet south of the house.
East of the house? Oh, gosh, sorry, I didn't bring my compass with me last evening.
The front of your house is on the north side of the property.
Correct, it is not parallel with the front of my house, it is perpendicular to the front of my house.
I understand that, but it extends 26 feet behind your house.
Agreed, and I'm looking to put a smaller garage in that location and a larger garage behind it.
Alright, but I guess my question, you're, you're telling me that that's going to be disruptive to your yard, it's a difference of four feet.
Yes. But it could be 30 by 30, so it will be deeper and wider.
Right, so you might have a, a little shorter driveway in front, or a deeper, going closer to the sideline, depending upon how it's located on the, uh, the property, and you
have, uh, uh, four feet further in, and you'd have the whole yard without a 900 square
foot structure in it.
I haven't asked to put a 900 square foot structure in the back of the lot?
700 and, uh- 29. 29-foot structure in the back. I mean, I have a hard time understanding the need to have a 700 square foot detached garage when the code will allow you to go four more feet and have a 900 square foot garage. And I understand the, the confidential thing that you included in the letter, and that doesn't impact the, that has nothing to do with the detached garage at all, that has to do with the attached garage.
Again, if, if you've been to the, have you had the opportunity to see it?
Absolutely.
Okay. So you'd see where it was said, if you looked at my neighbor to the right, they would be looking exactly into that large garage.
It's, you keep referring to-
Which is also has to be, and, again, it's not here, but if, if, if you've seen, one of the, the reason why the garage is collapsing is because there's a downhill slope into the garage, so every time it rains, my garage floods, it's literally has sandbags in it right now. So we have to level that off, so that's going to bring all of that up, so right now, my neighbors actually look above my garage, but to correct it and make it safe, and so this won't happen again in 20 years, it's got to be lifted, which is then going to impact both of my neighbors' views.
If I understand, you're still looking to do that, you will be lifting the garage, you're just looking to lift a garage that is 384 square feet?
Agreed, it will be smaller.
And the need, as I understand it from the letter, is to be able to house in the detached garage the items that your fiance is currently storing in Hilton, right?
That is not part of this application, sir?
Well, what is, I, I mean, I guess I'm having a hard time, because, um, you're going to add living space across the back of the home, and then you're going to have this 700-plus square foot structure in the backyard, and that's for what?
Two cars, a riding lawnmower, lacrosse gear, bicycles, things that families accumulate that are active in our community.
Alright, and explain to me the difference between a attached garage that extends four more feet south of the current garage, you're going to add living space above the, the attached garage, right?
That-
Isn't that what it says?
No.
The new construction makes the, oh, wait, hold on. Add some additional living space across the back of the home.
Agreed, and that's not above the garage.
Not above the garage, okay.
The possibility of doing that, again, if we're going to-
So explain to me the difference between a 900 square foot garage that complies with the code that's attached to the back of your home-
Sure.
And a shed that's allowed of a couple hundred square feet to store the lacrosse stuff, the riding lawnmower, the way most people, uh, in town, uh, store their stuff like that on the back of their property.
Sure, this is a case where we have an opportunity. My house is deteriorating, it's in a dangerous spot right now. I have the opportunity to build to better suit my family, and the requests of many people looking for homes in Aronacote that would prefer larger garage spaces. Actually, you commented earlier about, I wish I could rent space, but my children, it would be unsafe for my children to travel across St. Paul Boulevard to park their bicycles. It's not, again, it, the town has granted relief in different situations on smaller pieces of property. I, I'm not, I'm, I'm-
I'm recalling the Willow Creek application now, and that was to add a, a third car garage, that, the total space of which did not exceed the 900 square feet, but that would be a few feet closer to the sideline, and there was a s- large separation between the two houses. And I believe our rationale was that because of the large separation between the two houses, and adding a third, uh, car garage onto the existing one without exceeding the square feet, we were okay with that. You were referring to the other one that was on Joseph, uh, Street down in the flats, and I believe that was in a wide-open, uh, area, there was nobody on either side, and I'm not recalling how far he was exceeding the limit at all.
I believe, from view, it's at least a four-car, it, two cars attached, at least two cars on the detached.
I think it's too, too deep, right?
No, too wide.
I don't, I haven't, didn't go down, go down, check it out.
And also, the Will, if you were to look at, if you were to look at the Willow Creek home, there's a very narrow passage, and again, I don't want to, I'm not here to debate other neighbors, I'm just making, again, a request to the board for relief, to build an excess, and a, an appealing garage situation that's both supported by my nearest neighbors.
Okay. Does that answer this? So you want to improve the garage you have, totally, totally agree.
Yes.
Raise it up. What's the difference of building a two-car, two-car garage, or a shed to store the extra stuff in, that's allowable by law?
Sure, I, I think most people would say that the, a shed is not the aesthetically, um, preferred option.
But it can be.
It can be, and, but it's not as secure as a garage, I mean, we've had break-ins in the neighborhood. It does happen, it's not the safest preferred. Plus, again, I have a very unusual property on Sagamore Drive with a lot of usable land space, and it would be tucked in and more appealing than having a large structure attached to my house. It, it makes sense, it was actually suggested to us by an architect, we had not thought about it, but it was an architect who said, hey, have you thought of this? You can tilt it, you can build an, we're planning on building a nice stone patio in between the garage and the second garage, and making really beautiful livable space, we're committed to that. And not to have things in the yard and sheds that don't match your home, because you're not going to find a federal colonial shed that's going to match the 1920 character of my home.
You're, you're going to build this 700-something garage, right?
Yes, if, if allowable.
And build a shed to match your home in a, whatever style you'd like. Plenty of people build fancy sheds.
Could I ask a question about your application?
Sure.
Uh, when I'm looking at the survey map, the existing house, um, it shows, there's a notation there about garage, and then off to the rear of that, you've got an orange triangle, which I assume represents the new single-car garage?
Yes.
Uh, I think what the chairman was getting at is, he was trying to make the point that if you replace the garage in the existing location and made it a bit larger, it wouldn't be as intrusive, but it looks to me from this map that you're looking to convert that existing garage space to living space and then put the garage off the back?
Possibly, yes. Again, the, the other plans would be contingent upon what's granted. It also needs to be noted, though, that my current garage is a flat-top, there's no roof line. So again, my neighbors see above the garage, um, and again, to put a larger, if I put a 30 by 30 structure, the roof line is yet going to be higher, I mean, the bigger the structure, the higher the roof line. So again, uh, it's, it's a different, it's not like, it, it's going to look quite different than it does now.
So your point about it intruding further into your yard was because it would be located behind the footprint of the existing garage?
Agreed.
Okay.
Agreed, and if, when looking at the survey map, the neighbor to the right, their back, you, you can't see it there, but they would literally look, stare right at the huge garage from their, from their patio, that's their eye line, um, instead of to the, they have, their lot is oddly shaped again, as well, with, in terms of their view. And I, I can't implore enough my commitment to this neighborhood, any improvement that I've made to this home is to restore it to its original condition. I'm not looking to build a storage facility, I'm not looking to build barracks, I'm looking to improve not only my property, but the value of the properties around us.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about the application? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter. Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter. Move on to the next case on the agenda.
Next item on the agenda is case number PZB 1504-4. Upon the matter of request by LandTuck, acting as agent for Andrew Licardello Smettle Holdings, sorry, LLC, for use variance and area variances to construct sixty-two townhouse units with less than required side setbacks and exceeding maximum allowable density on premises 160 Dunsmore Road in an R1 residential district.
Mr. Knopf, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
You were here last month and told us, I think, about this property. Didn't you know you were going on about the next one?
No, this one. We made our presentation...
Right. Okay.
To show the... That we met the various standards for a use variance. Mr. Brockton was here. He did submit a supplemental letter in return of questions about the rate of return, which he should have, explaining his distinction between net return and gross return.
Do you agree, though, that it's premature for us to make a decision with respect to this tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I agree.
All right. So is there anything that we don't already have in front of us that we would need to know about from you tonight?
No, nothing further unless the board has any questions, but we pretty well presented everything last month and so... Thank you.
Those who wish to speak in favor of this application. Those who wish to speak in opposition to this application, you'd line up at the... On the wall. Come forwards, give your name and address at the microphone. Understand, we are not making a decision on this matter tonight. The paperwork has not all been done. All the testing hasn't been done. And the issue before us is the issue that relates to the variances, the use variance, whether or not a reasonable rate of return can be realized by the applicant on the property and the impact on the neighborhood. And that's what's in front of us, not the advisability of townhomes, condominiums, clustered things. Those are all for others to determine. Ours is limited to the variances that would be required.
Good evening. My name is Sheri Evershed and I reside at 95 Kennedy Circle. And the R1 law change that the developers' team has spoken about was not a change. It was a clarification of our R1 code. Nothing was changed. On March 19, 2015, the town board voted unanimously to accept clarification of the R1 code for the purpose, and I quote, "to affirm longstanding, understanding, and documented interpretations of uses permitted in R1, R2, and R3 residential districts." Additionally, the town board noted these clarifications were made, and I quote, "to limit potential for misinterpretation or misapplication of regulations and protect residential neighborhoods." At previous meetings, it was mentioned by the developers' team that this was a senior development. I'm not sure if they are still going to state this, but I just want to say that this property would have to be rezoned to R7 to make that statement true. There isn't anything senior about this project. Also, for over one and a half years, we have seen a changed application over and over again. One thing that hasn't changed is the fact that they still have not properly determined the area of the transition zone. They keep guessing where the line might be. The court was very clear in 2006 that the line may only be determined by site-specific, high-intensity soil sampling. Back in 2004 was the first application for apartments that our neighborhood fought. That developer was trying to rezone. He wasn't trying to make an apartment complex in an R1 neighborhood. Thankfully, that development was denied. After that controversy, the East Aronak White School District was interested in the property. Their middle school is right across the street and Laurelton Party School is a stone's throw away. They had it appraised and were trying to offer the owner fair market value for the property to eventually put in fields, trails, for field trips, et cetera. At that time, the owner wanted much more than the appraisal, so no deal could be made. Twelve years have passed and the owner came way down in price, way, way under what the school district was considering purchasing the property four years ago and sold it to the current owner. This developer wants to double the density from thirty-one single-family homes to sixty-two rental rowhouse apartments in an R1 neighborhood. This has never been done before in our town, but he claims this is the only way he will make enough money. Why would our neighborhood have to lose money with our home values depreciating because the developer has to be able to make enough money? Why would our neighborhood have to suffer so this non-resident can make a big profit? It makes no sense. Of course, many of us would like to have a park on this property, fields, trails, et cetera. I tried for years to bridge a deal between the property owner and the school or town. So many years, the property owner would not come down in price. In a town that is over ninety-seven percent developed, I hated to see one of the last bits of available land developed. This property buffers Dunsmore Creek and the falls are beautiful. If you Google Dunsmore Falls, Aronak White, you will see them. But I totally understand that this developer bought this property and it is his right to develop it. We bought our properties and our neighborhood with the knowledge that 160 Dunsmore Road was Zoned R1. That was our protection of only having more R1 single-family homes built in our neighborhood. Never did any of us think that there could be an application brought before the town that not only has doubled the density, it also is for rental apartments. If this development is allowed to be built, it sets a new precedent in our town of what R1 allows. It opens a Pandora's Box in our whole town, not only my neighborhood. The character of our neighborhood will be changed and our home values will plummet. Anywhere in town, it will not matter if you are in an R1 single-family neighborhood because that will no longer mean anything. Please deny this application for a use variance and uphold what R1 zoning means in our town. Thank you for your time and service.
Next.
If I could ask a question to counsel. I know there's been a discussion of the clarification of the zoning code. Correct me. Make sure that I understand it correctly. The confusion was over whether or not duplex houses were allowed. Is that correct?
Correct.
So it was either duplexes, meaning two units in one, or single-family?
Correct.
And this application is for rowhouses, multifamily, not duplexes? Correct. So the issue with the definition related to duplex units and there was some ambiguity where potentially duplexes could have been permitted as of right in the R1 district. The current proposal that's before you, it was never the town's position that this would have been permitted as of right, that we were talking about something different. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Joey Evershed. I reside at 95 Kennedy Circle. I have recently graduated from SUNY Brockport with a degree in business administration and finance and I am currently working on my MBA at St. John Fisher. At the last zoning meeting, the applicant and those representing the applicant were discussing cost and expected returns. The applicant is looking for a return in excess of twenty percent. To put that into perspective, the ten-year UST bill currently generates a return of about 1.4% annually. The S&amp;P 500, which is generally considered the market, has an annual return of about 9.8%.
Let me ask you a question. Do you have that all written down?
I'm sorry?
Do you have that written down, what you're telling us now?
Yes.
Good. Can you submit that in writing? Because sitting here tonight, I'm not going to absorb what all you're talking about. I have no degree in finance. I didn't go any further than eleventh grade math, okay?
Yeah, I have an extra copy. The applicant said he did not expect to have any trouble developing the land. When he bought the land, he figured he could just buy it and do exactly what he has proposed. And he claimed to believe he could develop the property the way he wanted, risk-free, and expect a return of twenty percent. And no single investment in the country offers a return of twenty percent without any risk. If an investment existed that offered returns of twenty percent without risk, everyone would become a developer. Mr. Licardello and his attorney should both understand that to make a profit, risk must be taken. Their defense claiming they believed when the property was purchased, it could be developed the way they want with no problem is completely invalid. Anyone with business sense should understand that the higher the return, the higher the risk. A twenty percent return without risk does not exist and the applicant knew that when he purchased the land. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Karen Cape and I live at 50 Dunsmore Road. I don't have all those facts and figures, but I'm just kind of stuck on Dunsmore Road towards Norton Street. And I just want to tell you what a nightmare it is to get to work every day during the school year. First, I can't get out of my driveway. And by the time I do and then I get to the corner of Norton, it's a nightmare to turn left with the school buses. I think the last time I was here, he was saying that it wasn't going to impact the traffic, but I'm pretty sure it's going to. Not to mention that several years ago, when I was here, when they were putting the legacy up behind me, right behind me, the developer... We talked to the developer about the fact that Kodect had dumped chemicals back there for years. It was just a field. His answer or his reply was, well, we didn't purchase the land. We leased it from the owner, who, by the way, was in his late eighties. So I'm very concerned about the environmental issues that this is going to cause. But it's really disturbing that we have to deal with this in a beautiful neighborhood or a once-was-beautiful neighborhood. I'd like to keep it like that and I'd really appreciate it if you would deny this to happen down the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Madeline Guera. I live at 171 Kennedy Circle. I'm one of the original owners. And my house is a custom-built home. When I built my house there, I expected it to be the way it is. And I want to tell this board, you are supposed to... You're making me very nervous. Because that's how bad I feel about this project.
Well, relax. Take your time.
It's your job to enforce the code, not change the code.
Actually, and let me correct this before there's any... Our job, under the state code, is to allow variances where the code does not warrant enforcement based on circumstances that are prescribed by the statute and cases. We are not code enforcement officers. We consider whether or not the circumstances exist that warrant relief from the zoning ordinance. A zoning ordinance precludes people from using their property in the manner they wish. And the only way that it's enforceable is if there are exceptions that can be granted. Otherwise, you can run into a situation where the government has to purchase the property because they're denying the owner the right to use the property. So you are mistaken when you state that our job is to enforce the code. Our job is to determine whether or not circumstances exist that warrant an exception to the code. So it's not correct to say that we enforce it. We take it into account. We weigh the facts and circumstances that led to the adoption of the code. We weigh and consider the basis for the code and against that, we're charged with balancing the interests of the property owner and the neighborhood and then to determine whether or not an exception is warranted, okay? I just wanted to clarify that because we get a lot of people who tell us that our job is to enforce the code and that is completely wrong. And I wanted to dispel that notion at this point, okay?
Well, this doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever.
I can understand that.
When you're talking about a homes that is required for thirty-one homes, private homes, to go to the extent of sixty-two rental properties, units? No.
Well, that's the question before us.
Put it in your backyard, not mine.
All right. That's the question before us. Anyone else?
Michelle Donahue-Dcheck, 105 Kennedy Circle. Thank you for the opportunity of speaking at this meeting. As others have stated before, strong opposition to this proposal. When we're thinking about a variance, a variance is an exception and, like you mentioned, thinking about why would this be acceptable? A claim of hardship because you can't make a profit on a piece of property that you purchased? Not my fault. It's not my responsibility and it shouldn't be all of our responsibilities either, as citizens of this town, to be able to watch people's financial purchases and help them in all ways to make a profit at someone else's expense. So hardship is... Does not meet those rules. When we talk about precedents in this town, there is... You know, this would set a major precedent in this town with limited space. This town is almost completely developed. Why are we even considering taking away an R1 property? An R1 with residential homes with churches and developing it even more when there is an apartment complex that is adjacent to it? So very concerned about that. It will absolutely change the character of this neighborhood. We're going to go from single-family homes to rowhouses with high density across from a middle school? That just doesn't seem safe. That just doesn't seem like it's... Traffic-wise, I've spent fifteen minutes getting out of, turning onto Norton's, make a left on Norton Street because traffic backs up to the school. You're saying sixty-two rowhouses with all of that additional traffic is not going to make a difference in terms of traffic and safety? I question that. You know, that affects the health and safety of all of our neighborhood. And, you know, Aronak White, like I said, is developed. Why are we developing it further with apartments that are not zoned for an R1 property? When I bought my home, it was in an R1 district. It was an R1 property. I knew, being in that area, what was going to... Could possibly be developed around me. Single-family homes. I'm fine with that. I am not fine with sixty-two rowhouses and high density behind my house. That's not what I signed up for, being in an R1 zone. So, you know, I just wanted to, again, air my concerns and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the application?
My name is Roy Marata. I live at 40 Carlsom Circle East. As I heard somebody mention, the East Aronak White Central School is interested in using this as an outdoor education area. Being a retired educator and seeing what outdoor education can do, we had a great program in Brighton. I would urge you to consider working with the school district, if that's possible, and making the decision based on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the application?
My name is Walter Jastrazab. I'm bringing a point up about safety in that area and what is being done to correct the road over there and the entranceway to the structure. We have seen nothing. And I'm thinking of children leaving the school area. They're walking. And passenger... I mean, parents are picking up children. Do you realize how much traffic is going through there? I am considering the safety. And nobody has brought that up in all the meetings we've been here, whether any mention was made about the structure of the area as to, do you not realize how big a truck is in case of a fire? And what happens in case you have an incident? How are the children going to get through? Are the buses through the area? If the big truck of a fire is driven there for the fires? That's something I can't see. Now, I would like to see some consideration being given by the town and the presentation of the planning, how much of a road or structure they're expanding within the building. Because you have, what, sixty-two housings? And there may be more than one car for each one renting. There may be... You can consider two, for example. That's a hundred and twenty... Over a hundred and twenty cars.
Hundred and twenty-four. That part of the math I can understand.
Hundred and twenty-four, yes. I'm not calculating. I did that when I was going to school. And I know, but this time, here's a man ninety-four years old. Maybe my memory isn't as good, but I'm concerned about the whole neighborhood. We have a lot of traffic coming from the expressway. And each... People are taking that road and up Dantin to avoid the light. And you see, there's no study being made, how many cars are coming through there during the school time? Now, when people... Now, when people are working and coming home, there's going to be a conflict. Because some of the buses... There's almost 30 buses waiting there to leave... Take the kids home from school, besides the ones that are being picked up by the parents. I don't know if I can add anything more to it. But that's my feeling.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Sir, what was your address?
171 Kennedy Circle.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir. Step right up.
Hi. My name is Spencer Place. I live at 166 Wall Road. That's the corner of Wall and Hulda. It is between Denzmore and Culver Road. We moved in recently, last October. But I'd like to, without rehashing too much of the previous speakers, I would like to bring up the concern for safety and traffic. It sounds like, not knowing all of the details, it sounds like there would be quite a bit more traffic added to the area and the neighborhoods. Having grown up in Webster on a street connected to major streets, there was a ton of traffic between Five Mile Line Road and gravel road, as that was used as an access road through our neighborhood. That was also a very heavily family-occupied neighborhood. So the point I'd like to bring up is with the added traffic, I believe this would be a safety hazard for children. Because this, between Denzmore and Culver, there's Heberly, Wall Road, and Whitlock, I believe, roads. And I know for a fact that those are used as shortcuts through to access 104 instead of going up to and down Norton, and then down Culver to 104 to get to Ridge Road and to access that side of town. We live at the corner of Hulda and Wall Road, and so there's a stop sign there. And so I'm already familiar with the amount of traffic that passes through there on a daily basis, and the amount of traffic that does not stop or ready for that stop sign as they rush through. And just today, as I was making my way home, before coming to this meeting, I saw lots of... Several families out biking, skateboarding, and several kids bicycling around the neighborhood, and lots of cars speeding through as well. So I don't know that I can add much more. I just wanted to raise that point.
Good. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone that wants to talk to us about the application that isn't for it or against it? And seeing none, and since we're not deciding anything tonight, we will adjourn the hearing to a future date, at which time we'll continue the hearing. We'll keep it open. We'll continue the hearing for further input once all of the environmental studies and planning review has been completed, and there's something that's ripe for us to make a decision with respect to.
Before we call the next item, could I have a point of clarification from counsel again? We talk about reasonable rate of return on an investment. And it seems to me that when we talk about it, people, I guess, assume that a reasonable rate means a positive rate of return. Now, you know, as someone who's invested some money before, you know, if you end up putting $100 in and getting $95 out, that, in my opinion, is a reasonable rate of return, and that you don't always, when you invest money, end up with a profit. Could you explain what reasonable means, and if it always means a profit on the investment?
So there's not a lot of case law out there that actually sets forth what a percent rate of return should be to be considered reasonable. I haven't seen any cases talking about a net loss on an investment. Most of the cases talk about a reasonable rate of return, being in the positive or a plus percentage. But with respect to the amount of that percentage, the cases all talk about, you know, it's not the developer's necessarily targeted rate of return, can't be an excessive rate of return. It's the minimal rate of return for them to recoup their investment, plus any, you know, minor soft costs they may have incurred. It's not in any way, you know, intended to be a significant profit or a significant return on that investment. It's for them to recoup their investment because they can't put the property to one of the permitted uses to realize a profit.
So if it were a 1% increase, if you invest $100... And this is going to be relevant to an application that's coming up having to do with the doc. If you get an even or a 1% rate, would that be considered reasonable, a reasonable rate?
I'd leave it to the board's discretion to determine what's a reasonable rate.
Have you seen anything in the case law to suggest it's not reasonable?
The cases don't get that specific.
All right.
They don't get that specific.
Mr. Chairman, could I speak to that, or on this application? Are we closed?
To what? To the reasonable rate of return?
Yes.
Since it was brought up, I'll give you the opportunity to put your two cents in.
Thank you. And one of the speakers brought this up. Somebody doing a real estate development is a high... As one of the speakers noted, is a high-risk venture. So, and as you know from those of tech economics or whatever, you do expect a higher rate of return to be projected from a high-risk investment because there's also the risk of losing money. So no one does a real estate development with the expectation of losing 5%. You know, you would walk away. So you have to have a positive, and it's going to be higher rate of return than putting your money in the bank because of the risk. So, and the one case we cited did have more like a 12%, 12 to 15. I think it was something like that. I can't remember. But it was, you know, it was a decent rate of return. It wasn't gigantic. So I think that is going to be what... And that's what our appraiser indicated, you know, for net return in that kind of ballpark because of the risk.
Something tells me we're going to have an opportunity to have a much more extended conversation about this at some point.
Right.
And if counsel has any case law to suggest that a reasonable rate is always a positive rate, the board, I'm sure, would be glad to see that.
Right. I'm sure it's... I think it's a question of how large it is. I understand that, you know. But yes, I'll look and see what I can come up with.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to the next matter on our agenda.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB1604-4. Mr. Chairman, do you want me to wait till the room clears, or...?
No, go right ahead.
Okay. Upon the matter of request by Land Tech Surveying...
Just if those who are exiting could exit quietly while... So we can continue.
Upon the matter of request by Land Tech Surveying and Planning Acting as Agent for Lighthouse Point Property Associates, for area variances to construct 125-unit multifamily apartment development comprised of two four-story, 54-unit multifamily apartment buildings with ground-level parking, and one three-story, a mixed-use building with 18-unit of multifamily apartment development, and 8,000 square feet of commercial space on first floor, a two-story clubhouse with pool and site-related improvements on premises 951 and 1027 Thomas Avenue, and 45 Pattonwood Drive in RH River Harbor District.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Knopf, good evening again.
Yes. We do have... We did bring with us the revised environmental assessment form and secret documentation because the staff, and especially your town engineers, requested that we put everything together in one new binder with our updated materials. So...
My understanding is that that hasn't been completed, correct?
It is. It's sitting out in the hallway. So I have it. I have it for you.
But isn't there something that isn't completed?
Well, yes. The... I mean, the secret process is not completed.
Right.
So I think... I'm not sure if Ms. Ivors wants me to give them to you, or I gave them basically to her, so...
Well, I would rather have them far in advance to look at than get them the night we're going to be asked to make a decision.
Right. So let me see if she'll let me bring them in here. But one point of clar...
I'll let you bring them in.
Thank you.
You can bring them in. You can pass them out to all.
All right. Let me... All right. Mr. Catalani will get them.
Give us some of reading.
Right. Basically, we compiled most of it as a rehash of what you've already seen, but we... Our documentation, we went in more detail to explain, address all the potential environmental issues, and...
Excuse me. I don't mean to interrupt you, but could you folks out in the hallway please either quiet down or leave the building?
Okay. We did have... We made some slight revisions to the site plan based on some questions by the planning board and all. So the building configuration is now... It's still 125 units, but there's 54 and 57 for a total of 111 in the larger building, and 14 along with the 8,000 square feet of commercial in the front building. So it's a slight... Basically, three units removed to the larger building, based upon just some, you know, refinement of the plans.
Could I just... A point of clarification from your last presentation. You talked about calculating the density at around 96 units based on three parcels?
Yes.
And you're building... You're constructing this on two parcels. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And what would the density be on just those two parcels? If you don't have to calculate it right now?
Yeah. I mean, it would be less. I mean, the... You know, I'm guessing maybe about 85 or something, but I... Let me...
Just because, as I was thinking about it, to allow 96 units on the two parcels would still require a variance.
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right.
Right. And then the, you know, we talked about the other, the city parcels and all that. But yes, that is correct. I mean, I'd have to do the math, but yeah.
Thank you.
I have done it, but I don't have it in front of me.
So is there anything other than this notebook of slightly revised materials that you want to present to us tonight when we're not making a decision?
No.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone here, since it was advertised for a public hearing, who came here with the intent of addressing this application that we're not going to make any decisions about tonight? If there's anyone here to speak in favor of that, come forward now. If there's anyone who wanted to speak in opposition, come forward. Anyone who just wanted to talk? Okay, we got some just talkers. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Mudge. I reside at 85 Beacon View Court. Before I open up my remarks, I would like to know what parcel number of that third parcel that you made reference to that will not be built on, but I would like to know the reference parcel number. I'm going to try and keep this very simple and stick...
Please do. Because we're not making a decision tonight. And I know you spoke the last time, and you explained to us why you were opposed to it. We recall your remarks, so if you could just keep it to something new.
I'm here to make my public comment.
Yes, and we're giving you the opportunity to do that, ma'am.
Thank you. Then let me proceed.
Within limitations.
Yes. May I go on?
Go ahead.
Okay. Issue number one. Contrary to developers' previous claims, the proposed development does not conform to 2014 Town's comprehensive master plan. The Lighthouse Point Design Principle does not include apartments, but does include condominiums. The local waterfront revitalization program requires enhanced public access to the waterfront and access to scenic views. This goal is not met. Development of the waterfront community opportunity areas is compatible with the residential scale and character of the existing neighborhoods. Again, this goal is not met by this plan. Resolution. Reduce the project's density, mass, height to be compatible in scale and design with the existing adjacent residential neighborhoods. And two, build condominiums, not apartments, to exceed the maximum of 95 units allowable per zoning code. Now, we might have to examine that on base of what I just learned about, about the two parcels of land that the density would be 85 units to code. Now, this is a little twist, so this is something new. I'm glad I came today. Issue number two. At the June zoning board meeting, the developers threatened suggested to build additional apartments behind Beacon View Court houses on adjacent city land if they do not get their way regarding the number of units, 125. This land in question is subject to city requirements and has no place in these discussions. Resolution. Require the project to adhere to zoning code 235-153-A3, allowable maximum density of units. Sir, did you hear my comment? You were talking with the attorney.
I did, ma'am.
Very good, because I don't want you to miss a word.
Ma'am, I'm able to listen to you and have a question with counsel.
Very good. I just want to... Very good.
And complete your presentation. We're giving you another opportunity to speak, which we normally don't do. This is a continuing hearing. Normally, we allow people to speak once during the hearing. We're making an exception tonight because of the nature of this. So go ahead, finish your remarks.
This is new information. This is in conjunction with the previous comments that I did make, and you asked me to come back and give you more information, and I'm doing as you asked. So please be respectful of me as you want of yourself. Number three issue. The project cost is the same for 125 units or 95 units. At previous town planning and zoning board meetings, the developers stated although the total cost is the same for either 95 units or 125 units, they cannot afford to build to the zoning maximum allowable requirements of 95 units because the project will not generate enough profit. This 125-unit apartment exceeds the allowable density by over 30%. If the profit margin is so slim, how likely will this project continue into the future? Can the town afford yet another failed project? Resolution. If the financial realities of this project cannot be realized with the required allowable maximum 95 units, even though the developers may recoup up to 20% of all costs from New York State tax credits, then the project should not go forward. Require... Number two, require the project to adhere to the zoning code, allowable maximum density. Number four, and this is my last one, sir. The majority of River Harbor District neighbors oppose the 135 revised 125-unit apartment complex. 117 residents, or 92% of the people surveyed in March 2016, signed the opposing petition number one. We mailed the signed petitions and names, street directory, to you on April 2016. Approximately 60-plus people have spoken in opposition to the project, at least four public... At the last four public hearings in March, April, May, and June of 2016. Only a handful of people were in favor of the project, and most of them were not from our neighborhood. As time passes, will the planning board dismiss or diminish these opposing remarks? I'm starting to get the sense, yes, this is what's happening, and I hope everybody witnessed how I am being treated by the board chair with immense disrespect.
Ma'am, I'm listening to everything you have to say.
Resolution. Call the neighbors. Have a conversation with them. Their names and the contact info is on each signed opposition petition number one. View the video recordings in the town's website if you were not present during these past public hearings. Number three, read the published March 2016 Town of Arundecoye Older Adult Services Study, A Town for a Lifetime. This reports what the seniors want for a retirement place if they cannot remain in their own homes. Four, place a building moratorium for six to 12 months to organize and charge a River Harbor District Committee group of involved parties, that being River Harbor District neighbors, City of Rochester, Arundecoye Planning, Zoning, Conservation Board, designs, to determine the best land use and conservation. Thank you.
With respect to the last suggestion, ma'am, that's an issue for the town board, not us. We don't do moratoriums.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to thank you for this opportunity and for the respect that many of you have shown me.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm a little confused. I don't have everything in front of me, but you had talked about a parcel of land... a parcel of land belonging to the city that they were not going to build on unless they couldn't do something else. And I was, you mentioned that it was adjacent to the Beacon Hill property, and I thought it was on the other side of the river.
No, it's on the same, it's on the same side, it's on, it's on the, on the east side of the river.
But it's owned, it's owned by the city?
Uh, it, right now, it's owned by Gilbert, but it's situated in the City of Rochester.
Right, okay.
It's a privately owned parcel that is located in the City of Rochester, so it's subject to zoning in the City of Rochester. Developers' commitment with respect to that parcel has been, if they can obtain the approvals they're seeking for the number of units that they've asked for, they would agree to some sort of restrictive covenant or deed restriction so as to not build on that triangular parcel behind the subdivision.
Okay, which is on the same side of the river.
Correct.
That's what I was confused about, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna give this transcript to secretary copy for you all.
Great.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak with respect to this application? Seeing none, we will, uh...
We're not doing any speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just in the back room, pardon me.
Okay, well, if there's anyone else that intends to speak, could you please line up on the side wall as I asked earlier, so that we know who you are and we can get, hear everyone? Go ahead.
My name is Kelly Adam, I live at 110 Beacon View Court. I appreciate the frustration that Mr. Hinman is experiencing, because we are also experiencing the exact same frustration. This has been going on for two and a half years for us. A lot of people can attest to losing sleep over this. My nest egg is in jeopardy. If this project does not proceed in the nature that the developer says it will, then most likely my property values will go down. I bought in this neighborhood because of its scenic and coveted street. This is not some little rinky-dink street on this, somewhere in west or east of Arondiquay. We back up to the river, and it is a beautiful neighborhood, and it should stay that way. When we were at the planning board meeting, they were speaking of a building that was going to be over 320 feet tall. That is not in character with this neighborhood, and the density is ridiculous. Excuse the expression, but this is trying to cram 10 pounds of crap in a five-pound box. It's too small of a parcel. If they want to build something this large, then they need to find a different parcel, and I'm sorry if the Town of Arondiquay doesn't afford them that luxury. The other problem is too, is that in February of 2014 was when this whole project started, when Mr. Gilbert bulldozed down an entire EPod, because as the town discovered, and as the neighborhood discovered, that Mr. EPod had, or Mr., Mr. EPod, that's what we should call him, Mr. Gilbert was in contract with these developers. There's a part of me that believes this was very colluded, and the developers probably just did this as he was bulldozing down this EPod. No more destruction of the trees, they want a variance on this EPod. There's still 60-foot trees standing on this lot. There's still a nice row of seclusion from this property that runs along CSX. No more destruction of trees, no more extreme density in this area. We still have a right to our privacy, we still have a right to not having to look at streetlights, the noise that it's all going to come to us from the construction. That's why our neighborhood is so frustrated. We've been screaming for two and a half years for some relief, and we're not getting any. So please do not allow these variances, keep it within the code, keep it to 95 or smaller, and if it's down to two parcels, well then guess what? Your code's gotten a little smaller. Do not allow any more destruction of this EPod, do not allow these variances and setbacks. The setbacks are ridiculous, this is a residential neighborhood, they should not be coming closer and closer and closer to our properties. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You had mentioned that you believe the property values on your street would go down.
Absolutely.
How do you come up with that?
My husband is a real estate agent, and he's been in the business for 25 years.
How did he come up with that?
How did he come up with that?
I mean, yeah.
His 25 years of experience have led him to believe that any time that he has a residential home that backs up to apartment complex units, which are not pride of ownership, which are not in a residential neighborhood, people do not want to live there.
But, but this is not going to be, from what I'm understanding, it's not going to be just your average apartment complex, the way they built back in the 60s. This is going to be something like that's being built right now on, on the bay, along the hill on the bay by the restaurants there.
I, I...
I mean, to me, it seems like it's going to be a little, on the, on the nicer looking side, and I would think it might increase the value, and again, I'm not a professional realtor, so I don't know, but I'm just going on instinct, that it might increase the value of the home, homes in that area, completely along with making it look better than what's there right now.
I would also say, if you do have physical evidence, a report from a Realtor, and you would like to present that to us, I think to my fellow board members' point, just because someone says it's going to increase or decrease property, if you have something for us to look at that's concrete, I don't believe that we're going to have the hearing be completely closed.
Well, I would kind of like that, I would like that same courtesy from the real, from the developers. We have nothing that they're proving to us that my property value is going up, nothing. They just keep saying that it is, but they're not proving anything to us to, to...
So if you have something that you'd like us to consider, feel free to provide it to the town, and we'll consider that.
This property, from what I understand, has, it's zoned that it can be developed, it's just a matter of how many extra apartments we would approve, but my point is, is...
If any.
If any. But my point is, is it can be, and it, I think a lot of people would love to see that area being prettied up a little bit.
I am not in opposition...
And not saying your street, because your street's gorgeous, but I'm just saying that, that whole end there, um, it would be nice to see it, it be something handsome like that's on the bay, and...
That's, that's a matter of opinion. Your idea of handsome and my idea of handsome are two different things. I live in a residential neighborhood, and I don't want to turn down my street every single day and see a 320-foot structure behind my home overshadowing the trees and overshadowing my home. That is not attractive to me, and it's not attractive to pretty much everyone in our neighborhood. And that's what we've been coming forward saying, keep it within the density. There should never be anything 318 feet tall in a residential neighborhood that's all two-story homes. My home is 30 feet tall, that's 10 times the size of my residential home.
If I could just clarify that, just for the folks watching and home of the folks in the audience, the applicant's not seeking approval of a building that's 300 feet tall. The reference to the 320 feet and change relates to the elevation above sea level, so the overall height of the buildings are approximately 70, 80 feet, including the parking underneath of the tallest building, but I can let developer give you the exact metrics.
But it's still going to be, it's still going to be four or five stories tall, and that is a large building. I was down on Canadigua Lake this, this weekend, and they have a fi, a five-story, it's a parking garage, is considered a story, and then four stories on top of that. It's a pretty large structure, it's a big structure.
Is there, are there any other new points you'd like us to consider?
No, that's really it, but I wanted to express that the reason why our neighborhood is so frustration, is we, is so frustrated, is that we just don't feel like we're being heard, and then there's frustration coming back from the board also, because you're sick of hearing about it, we're sick of hearing about it. We would like to get on with our lives, and a lot of people are losing sleep, a lot of people are considering putting their houses up for sale, because we just don't want to deal with this anymore. It's very stressful to our entire neighborhood.
When you submit, what you're going to submit about the property values, could you just address, because the point that's in front of us is not whether or not they can build apartments, the point that's in front of us is how many they can build on the property. So if you're going to submit something that relates to property values in relation to backing up two apartments in general, that doesn't help us.
Okay.
If you want to submit something about backing up two apartments of 80, whatever the numbers are, 82, 95, 125, the difference between those, that would be helpful, okay? Because that's, that's what the, the issue in front of us again is not whether or not they can build apartments on that lot, whether or not they can put commercial things there, that's, that's not what's in front of us. It's where on the property can they do it, and how much can they put? That's the issue in front of us.
Well, then I would like you to say please stay within the density.
Well, I gather that that was your point and Ms. Mudge's point.
All right.
We're well aware of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we're probably going to keep coming back.
I'm sure.
As long as you have us, and as long as this is going on, we're coming back, and I'm sorry if you're going to dislike what we have to say, but...
It's, we don't dislike what you have to say, it's that we can't make a decision tonight.
We understand that.
So you're going to come back and you're going to tell us the same thing on the night that we make a decision.
We're just tired of two and a half years of...
I am sure that you are, I have no doubt of that.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next.
Hi, everybody. My name is Moi Carrington, I live at 90 Beacon View Court, and it looks like everybody's having a real good time tonight. Thanks for having me again. I'm going to try not to be redundant, and I don't have much that's sensational, but I apologize in advance. I'm obviously against the project, spoken three times on it. I'm going to reiterate that I had 11th grade math as well, and the number proposed, number of units, is obviously still greater than 95, which doesn't make sense to stuff it into that small area next to a bridge. I'm going to refer to the five factors that must be considered when granting area variance, change the neighborhood character. Clearly, this will be a change. It's a monstrosity of a project, it looks great, I've said that before, I think everybody's done a nice job with it, and I appreciate everything I've seen, but I don't think it's right for the area. I'm going to refer to the 1999 plan that was retail and green space, had in my hand from an elderly neighbor who's since moved. We're not against development, we want, we love Arondiquay, we want to see that area beautified, used, whatever, but not for transient living, okay? It's the same issue that the Densmore people are having. Are there alternative solutions? I don't know, maybe look back at previous plans. Is the requested area variance substantial? Absolutely. I don't have the facts, 11th grade math didn't serve me well, but it's certainly over 30 Is this self-created? Is point number five? Will an area variance have an adverse effect on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? Absolutely. I didn't realize the Densmore since, situation was so contentious, and they've been at this longer than us, but those environmental implications really, really scare me. I don't mean to be redundant in that, but that's scary stuff. That Lakeview Amphitheater in Syracuse, which I don't know if anybody's been to or has heard of, it opened last August, is on contaminated grounds right on Lake Onondaga. It's scary, there's radiation coming out of the ground, but there's walking paths that were remediated. If you go off the path, who knows? I just read an article on it, and it does scare me. Thank you for listening, I know I'm being redundant, please consider the residents' opinions and not people who are colluding in the neighborhood, showing up because they're related or friends or want to go fishing in the new neighborhood, potentially, and then getting a high five on the way out. Thank you, everybody.
What was that project in Syracuse that you were talking about?
The Lakeview Amphitheater, brand new, opened last August.
Lakeview?
Lakeview Amphitheater. Very interesting read on Facebook, and I don't recall what Syracuse newspaper it was in, but the whole project took five years to remediate, and it's scary stuff if you read it, okay? Thank you, everybody, appreciate your time.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? I'll give you two minutes.
Yeah, just briefly, I want to mention a couple of things. Obviously, we feel it's a great thing that we are addressing the brownfield to remediate, that's a real positive, rather than leaving it unremediated. We did include in, in the packet, the, the last item is our property value protection plan, we are guaranteeing values of adjacent properties, but we really, you know, feel that property values are going to go up, so we don't really think we're going off on a limb much, but we are addressing that. I did check my numbers, it was 85 on the two parcels, I did remember correctly. Um, can I borrow your portable mic?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, just to clarify, you had a question here, the parcel, there's three parcels, this parcel is also in the Town of Arondiquay, about .6 acres, that we're not building on, that would also be, we'd commit to that being, you know, green space, whatever, not, not buildings. So we're just kind of shifting some of the density onto here, we think it makes more sense. But this parcel, this triangular piece, and this kind of moon, or I don't know, half-moon, whatever, shape here are both in the city, we would be purchasing, seeing those from Mr. Gilbert. We are committing to not building buildings there, even though in the city, they don't even have, they don't have a density limitation. We, as we explained last meeting, we have some substantial costs that are not self-created, the, both the, the problems with the foundations, with the geotechnical and the environmental, some extraordinary costs. We would have to build here, what, basically what we're proposing is to take the units we could build here and here and move them, kind of cluster them onto these lots, and we think that's better for the neighbors, and it's better for the environment and the community. So that's basically what our proposal is as far as the zoning board goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan, could you also briefly, it's been a while since we've talked about it, but could you remind everyone the area variances that you're seeking?
Yeah, the, the setbacks, there's a couple of setbacks, but they're setbacks from our own property lines, so, um... Here and here, the, we're asking for setbacks, and our, it's not a setback from the neighbors, it's a setback from our own internal property line, so we're the only ones who will be impacted. And then the other is the density. Again, going from, you know, a potential of 95 if we built on all three lots, to the 125, but again, we could put the 30 on the city property, so we're committing to not doing that. So we're really, overall, we don't think we're really increasing density, it's just we're kind of clustering it together, which we think is a positive.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to pause that hearing, and we'll resume at a later date. Do we have a motion to take case ZB 1605-6 off the table?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven in favor, no opposed, no abstentions.
Case number ZB 1605-6, upon the matter of request by Carrie Brown for a use variance to construct a plus or minus 3.5 foot by thir, plus or minus 300-foot dock without a principal structure on site on premises 375 Bayfront Lane North in an R3 residential district.
Carrie Brown, 375 Bayfront Lane North.
Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Okay. To reiterate from previous meetings, the proposed project for the construction of a three-foot wide by 40-foot long dock attached to the 30-foot waterfront edge by 90-foot lot. As follow-up with the last meeting, I was advised to get documentation of return on investments, of which I provided a spreadsheet. In the spreadsheet, it includes, at the top, docks, or vacant properties with docks, in the middle is my property, and at the bottom are vacant properties without docks, listed for sale.
44 Ravine Avenue is your property, right?
Oh, yeah, I had a typo. I meant to put 375 Bayfront Lane, I have a different copy.
Oh, but 44 Ravine Avenue, that is your address, right?
My address, but the parcel property...
Right, that's where your house is.
Right, I meant to put the parcel property on there.
So what this Realtor is saying is that you can get 10,000 more for your property if you put a dock on it.
The appraiser, who I talked to.
The appraiser, right?
Mm-hmm. Anthony Garcia.
I'll bet you can get a lot more if you can put a house on it, right? But the zoning ordinance doesn't allow a house, and the zoning ordinance doesn't allow a dock, so tell us that it would be, of course it'll be worth it, it's going to be worth more no matter what you put on. The issue is, without a dock, the way you bought it, can you realize a reasonable rate of return? What did you pay for that property? Have you been able to figure that out? The deed that you received, did it convey the parcels together?
Yes. Yes.
And.
That I gave you. Didn't I give you the deed?
I don't know. Do we have the?
For how much? How much did you pay for that? For both parcels?
For my house and my property.
For both parcels, how much did you pay?
140.
140. And what is the assessed value of the parcel with the house on it? We have the assessed value of the standalone unit at $20,000, and we've already had testimony that someone's willing to pay $20,000 for that. So what's the assessed value of the parcel with the residents on it?
I think it was 127.
127?
Or 117. 124.
So you purchased both parcels for 140, and the assessed value is 144 for those parcels? Is that correct?
So, yeah.
I assume you didn't take Mr. San Filippo up on his offer to purchase the lot for you for $20,000?
No, not with how I've been treated, so.
Huh?
Not with how I've been treated, so.
Okay. So the lot is appraised at $20,000, the other lots appraised at 124, and you purchased it for 140. So you purchased it for $4,000 less than it's assessed for, right? Any, do you have anything else for us to consider besides what you've already submitted to us previously?
I don't.
If I could ask a question, I mean, we've heard a number of people in the residents in the area say that it will change the character of the neighborhood. Could you speak to that?
How a dock would change the character of the neighborhood.
A standalone dock on that will change the character of the neighborhood, because there are no standalone docks on independent parcels. And I've heard a number of, in that area, standalone docks on parcels with no structure.
Is there an area where you believe there are standalone docks?
Yeah, on Seneca Road and.
On parcels without structures?
Yeah, Seneca Road. 662 Seneca Road, there's docks.
And is there a house that is associated with the dock? And where is that on Seneca Road?
662, 664, and 668.
662, 664, and 668.
667, right?
And those are assessed at 194.9, 194.9?
Those are listing prices.
They're listing prices.
For parcels with just docks and no proper, no residences?
No residents. And then, so the first three, all three lots were sold for $350,000 with a dock on it.
The three lots combined?
Yeah. On Seneca, so the 66, they're relatively big lots, .28, .28, .26.
And there's no houses that are associated with those docks? Is that accurate?
It was, I believe it's the Amburgia Properties that are on Seneca Road. There's three properties there that have site plan approval for a structure, yes. They've already got plans for a house, but the house is not there.
Oh, so the dock is there, but the house hasn't been built yet?
Right, I can't get the.
Is that the one that was fenced in and was gonna be, have the electric gate and all that?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
But they haven't, that was a few years ago, and they haven't built the homes yet?
It seems that the fence is there. It seems like there's electrical unit there, but I don't see any structures.
They could be pre-existing, could have been pre-existing.
What's that?
They could have been pre-existing, the docks.
Okay.
Because there, there were structures on that property, I believe.
Oh, that had been taken down, and now they're in the process of putting up new structures?
Correct.
All right.
Correct.
So, because I don't recall approving docks there with no structures. Yeah, the only dock that I recall approving with no structure on water was further south on Arundecoid Bay, where the county came in and cut the property in half and divided it between where the house was and where the dock was, and we said that they.
The road was separated by the?
Right, separated by the road.
Didn't know that address, so I didn't put it on.
Yeah, it was immediately adjacent to it if you go down. I think to get to that.
I believe it's Bayfront Lane South.
Yeah, you have to go down Orchard, something to get to there. Orchard Boulevard to get there.
Michelle, do you know how long those lots were vacant after the structures were torn down? Was it a number of years?
I don't, I don't recall. I'd have to pull, I'd have to pull the file, because I believe the planning board did a subdivision approval and subdivided that into three lots. And there was a proposal to build the three houses down there, but I, I believe there was a structure there before the subdivision. Carrie may be able to touch on that.
We granted some area variances for the.
Fencing. I remember with the fencing. She's, spreadsheet in regards to 662, 667 Seneca Road, that there are vacant properties with docks that are on them currently now. The, I believe they're the Amburgia parcels that did have, I thought they did have a previous structure on there, and then they went for subdivision approval before the planning board.
Yeah, so that was a, there was a structure. It was, they had site plan and subdivision approval by the planning board. The existing structures were demolished. I don't know if dock structures are still located at the location or not, to be honest with you. I haven't been down there in some time, but those are just development sites that have not yet been improved. They've not physically been built out.
But when the docks were put up, there were structures that were on the property?
There was at least one, one house. I don't know if there's more, there were more docks than there were structures. And I'm sorry, I don't have, that all predated my arrival. I was just right around the time where the subdivision, then there was a minor revision to the subdivision. They changed the configuration a little bit based on a potential buyer who wanted to do something a little bit different than was originally approved by the planning board. So it's been to the planning board a couple of times. And I could find out more about that, but I don't have that information off the top of my head.
The applicant's given testimony that there's three separate docks there currently without a structure.
Right, and they may, if that's the case, again, I haven't been down that way, or, and if I was, it was to look more at the land than it was to look at the water side of what was happening. It would have been because there had been struck, there at least was one structure on the, on the property. I can maybe go see if I can pull records to determine whether there were three separate, if that, if the board would be interested in me trying to track that information down.
I think I would be. I don't, won't speak for the rest of the board, but.
Okay.
Yeah, 673, 667. Dock approved, 673. I'm a market for 1999.
Okay, we'll take.
I mean, so if I'm understanding this correctly, that's about 10 times as large as your parcel, and it's about 10 times the assessed value?
Yeah.
.03 to .33 is actually 11 times as much, $200,000, okay.
Yeah.
So the $20,000 value is on par with these other parcels without structures and docks?
And the tax, what it was assessed at tax-wise?
Yeah.
Right?
The 194,000 threw me for a loop without a building on it, but it seems to be on par with the $20,000 for .03 acres.
When was that dock approved, at 673 Seneca Road? Do you know?
I have no idea.
Do you know that it was approved? And not just built? We have people that build things without getting approvals and permits.
I don't know. I have no idea. I could go run down there and see.
Can you check 673 Seneca Road, too?
I'm gonna check all, all, all the, I can check all these in our building permit. I will tell you that in the past, depending on the year, a lot of times the town would defer to DEC for any permitting required for dock installation. There is also provision for the town to issue the permit as well for building it. I can find, I'll see what I can track down upstairs in our system.
All right, thanks.
I don't have to contact the DEC, do I?
No, I'm just gonna run upstairs and see what records we might have on file. I'm gonna go turn, I have mine.
All right, so while she's checking on that, is there anything else that you'd like to add to what you've previously put before us?
I don't think so.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? And the same is with the Densmore people. Since we've already had this hearing in the past, if you'd keep your comments, please, to something new that we haven't heard before, that would be appreciated.
Joan San Filippo, 383 Bayfront Lane North. I oppose this, her application. She has not done anything to the property. I would think that if you intend to improve this property, you would have been down there cleaning it up, cutting the lawn, improving it, planting gardens, putting some perennials in, generally making it a beautiful place that it is. It's in a total state of neglect. It shows that this is an irresponsible person who can't do something like this. Also, I think her motivation is just to sell her pieces in the near future to try to get as much money as she can, and this is a way for her to do it. I don't think she's motivated to put in a dock. I think she's motivated to sell her property with this as an incentive. So I'll leave it to this good board to make a fair judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could ask a question of counsel, if the applicant, after being granted a variance, use or area, if they do not exercise their right within a year, does it extinguish? I would suggest we put an express condition for it to extinguish, especially with respect to a use variance. The presumption would be that it does not expire. For use, the presumption is it does not expire. For area variance, does it? For area variance, I believe, I'd have to double-check the law, but I believe it's after a year. If they don't pull a building permit, it would lapse. Okay.
Albert Ranieri, 351 Bayfront Lane. I just have a comment to make on that other property you guys were talking about, because I tried to purchase that property.
Not this hearing?
The 672 or whatever, Seneca.
Oh, okay.
That dock was already there, and I know it's one big dock that, that was in that, on that parcel already, because I tried to look at that. I was looking at that when I bought my house. That's the only comment I have.
Okay.
This is a picture of the piece of property that they're talking about.
672?
No, her property. Just to show.
Oh, the 375 Bayfront or whatever it is?
Right, whatever it is. Just to show what, what it looks like.
375 Bayfront Lane.
That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Next, yes, sir?
My name is Bob France. I'm at 359 Bayfront Lane North. I've been a real estate broker for over 45 years. I'm a little in tune with value and structures. I'm a little confused by the amount of courtesy been extended this applicant. She comes to you before you, not knowing the assessment of her own house, the assessment of the lot. She's not quite sure the value of the lot. It's very simple. If you didn't get the lot, what would you have paid for your house? If you would have paid so much for your house, and now you have the lot, and you paid so much more for the lot, what is the value placed on the, on the, on the lot? To me, it's very simple. We're not, seem to be getting the direct answers. And who is this appraiser that she has? What are his credentials? Who is this person? I would like to know. I'm in the business. I probably would know this person after 45 years of being a broker. So who is this person who was appraising for the applicant?
She lists her name as Marlene Garcia.
And her credentials are?
Well, that we don't have.
Okay, well, okay. Certified.
Thank you for telling us. We're being respectful. We appreciate that.
That's pretty much it. Again, I think we touched the bases before that we should, the applicant has shown no respect for the neighbor in regards to taking care of her property. This is her property. It is an investment. With the fact that she can put a dock on or not put a dock on, still should have a little respect for her neighbors and the property itself. If she has any, any interest in the actual value of it, there should be some maintenance and some directed towards that, so.
I, I, I understand the whole neighborhood's frustrated with the appearance of the, of the lot. However, I do understand that she's not allowed to park down there. She's not allowed to do anything down there, so.
Untrue. There's general parking. She can't come into the inner lot, because it's the homeowners association.
I was under the understanding, last time we spoke, that she wasn't even in, allowed in the outer lot.
The outer lot is for guests and anybody coming down there, which she would certainly qualify for being able to park.
Okay, then it's, because I was.
The inner lot.
I was under the, because we, we had spoke about this, you know, having a lawnmower, bringing a lawnmower down there so that she could take care of it. And then somebody mentioned putting up a shed down there or tarping a lawnmower and leaving it down there. But I was under the understanding, and again, maybe it's my misunderstanding, that she wasn't allowed to park down there at all.
No. Untrue. She's not allowed in the inner, the inner parking lot, the association parking.
So the outer parking lot is the lot that is kind of near the big condo.
Condoms, that's correct.
Okay.
So as contractors and stuff come in to work on our properties and stuff, this is where they would generally park.
So if she, she could park down there and bring a lawnmower, she could.
And again, if she was coming down there to bring a lawnmower and plant flowers.
The gentleman behind you is shaking his head, saying no.
No.
So, so again, there's, in your own associations, there's different differences. My point is, is you guys are all pickling on everybody, how it's taken care of, yet she's really got no way to access it. If she had a dock, she could pull up on a boat and bring a lawnmower on a boat. You know, she has no way to access the property. And it's the way you guys.
Do we have your six up the top of the hill? Okay.
All right.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thomas San Filippo, 383 Bayfront Lane North. Some of the board members seem to take issue as to what our association chooses to do with our private property. So I'd just like to tell the, tell the board exactly what's going on down there. Our association.
If you could focus it to the issues before us on the use variance for this property, it would be helpful.
Well, Mr. LaPerry brought up the subject of the parking.
I'm sure he did. If you could focus it to what is before us, that would be helpful.
So I can't speak as to, to, to respond to Mr. LaPerry's comments?
You can say whatever you want.
Okay, fine.
Just, it would be helpful.
Just trying to understand what I'm allowed to say and what I'm not allowed to say. Thank you very much, Mr. Paul.
Well, we don't regulate the content. We just try and keep.
We just ask for it to be relevant, that's all.
I just wanna make you aware of what's going on as far as our parking rights are concerned. We have an association that has.
I'm understanding now, between you and your other neighbor there, that there's a parking issue. And I get that.
Well, there isn't.
It's part of your association, but in the same relevant, you're all, you have all criticized the way she takes care of this lot, and yet she has very little. you're all, you have all criticized the way she takes care of this lot, and yet she has very little limited access to get to it.
That's our point exactly, Mr. LaPerry.
Okay, so you don't care about that?
What I, what I, what, here's what I care about, Mr. LaPerry. One, the association owns and controls both lots.
I understand. You told me that.
We have rules and regulations that have been voted on and installed by our members. Okay? That's separate from the houses, has nothing to do with the houses. You don't have to be a member of the association, but if you're not, you're not allowed to park in either lot. That's, that's.
Here's my issue with you. And what you're presenting, you're criticizing her for not being able to take care of, of, of her property. You're criticizing her because you're saying the association should have control of her property and that she shouldn't have an impact on yours, but yet you're denying her the ability to take care of her property. So you're, you're denying her the same thing that you're saying she's gonna deny you of.
That's not, that's not what I'm saying.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
I, I, if you would let it speak, maybe I could, maybe I could.
I think we're getting a field of where we need to be. The issue in front, she's applied for a use variance. So the issue that's in front of us is whether or not she satisfies the criteria.
You're correct. I just wanted to respond to Mr. LaPerry.
I understand there's a difference of views about the homeowners association and parking, but quite frankly, whether she, um, were using the property to store her garbage, I'm, I'm sure it violates some other code, but that wouldn't violate, if it doesn't violate the zoning ordinance, it's not in front of us.
We couldn't, we couldn't say anything about it.
Right. So what's in front of us is, can she realize a reasonable rate of return without a dock, or is a dock necessary for her to realize a reasonable rate of return? What would the impact be upon the neighborhood if we allowed a dock without a, a, a principal structure? Those are the issues that are in front of us.
I just wanted to make sure that this board wasn't being swayed by something that has nothing to do with the issues.
I understand. And we.
In reference to reasonable rate of return, this, our attorney, and we spoke about this earlier, in reference to it being a nominal thing. A reasonable rate of return is someone that is, if you own a piece of property, the, a rate of return cannot be, not necessarily be just, uh, money. It can be just the overall use of the property. If the rate of return to me is, hey, I can enjoy this property, it, it, it's, is, is it have to be a nominal?
You, you would have to tie the enjoyment of the property to a nominal value. You'd have to quantify it in some way, otherwise we can't really weigh rationally what, what that benefit is versus the detriment.
They talk about dollars and cents per.
Yeah, they talk about dollars and cents per. You have to quantify. You can talk about enjoyment of the premises and what that might be worth, sure, but we've got to quantify it as a figure. And the classic example is, you know, if you paid a hundred dollars for the lot and you only have an offer, you know, to purchase it for fifty, then you're not realizing a reasonable rate of return.
Right, but I, I, I'm just wondering, is the rate of return, the fact that, in, in enjoyment worth, you know, something to her, not a nominal, um, um, amount of money, just like, like everybody living on the water, they enjoy it and it's a, you know.
Well, the issue is with a dock, without a dock.
Right, and, and with a dock, it's gonna have more rate of enjoyment than it would without a dock.
Right.
And, Mr. LaPerry, if she builds a house on the property, she's perfectly welcome to put a dock in.
I understand.
She should build a house, and then she'd be in compliance with the ordinance and she could build a dock. There's nothing stopping her from making an application to build a house. Just, she just has to meet, she has to make, get area variances, just like everybody else who built a house down there. She has to, she has to make application to get a permit. She's doing it backwards. And that's because she has no intention to build a house. She wants to build a dock and, put a dock on the property so that she can sell the property for a greater profit. She doesn't even own a boat. She's told you that she does, but I don't believe she does.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone that would like to speak about the application, neither for it or against it? And would you like to come up and address anything further? That's entirely up to you. You have the opportunity. After people have spoken in opposition to the application, we give every applicant the opportunity to address any points that have been made by those in opposition that are relevant to the issue that's in front of us. So if you'd like to take advantage of that, you're welcome to. If not, that's fine also.
Yeah, so, um, I do have a boat and I have, I actually had to purchase a boat slip this summer instead of doing what I wanted to go through with and build a dock. So I had to purchase a boat slip so I could put my boat into the water so I can enjoy my boat. So even that is just beneficial for me to have my boat at my house instead of driving.
Not at your house. It's at the property that you own that's near your house.
True.
Right.
On my parcel.
Well, it's not on, it, well, it's your parcel by the bay, but your house is on a different parcel and a different.
I'll just.
Section. Alright. And Ms. Ivors has papers in front of her, which I'm assuming are going to address the other docks that you were.
So there's lim, only limited information that I was able to, um, for, um, six sixty-seven Seneca Road. Um, there, we have, um, on file a demolition permit that was issued back in twenty fifteen. Um, that includes the demolition of two houses, two cottages, one garage. In parentheses, it says past cottage, three sheds and two outhouses. And in parentheses, it indicates that one outhouse already had been demolished. So it sounds like there were, on that one parcel, there may have been multiple, um, structures, and so it's.
Pretty crowded.
Yeah, and it's a fairly, it's since been subdivided into three separate building lots. Um, but at the time, down in that area, uh, development, you know, didn't always follow the traditional one structure per parcel. Um, and there are other examples of that in the town historically, um, where there might have been sort of family units that were developed. So it's a little bit difficult to know exactly, um, what came first, you know, the chicken or the egg.
There was a structure on that in addition to the dock.
So a six sixty-seven certainly had multiple structures, so I don't know if dock or docks would have corresponded to that part, property.
There's no indication that the docks were built subsequent to the demolition.
No, no, there isn't, and we would have record of it now, subsequent to, I, I, at the, um, for the other, other locations, um, there are no records in our system, and I say no records in our system. Our, um, our property system goes back to, um, that I can search electronically at a desktop, goes back to about nineteen ninety, early nineteen nineties, probably nineteen ninety-one. Uh, and that's, that's a sort of, not a, don't quote me on the exact date, but we have nothing in system for six sixty-two, six sixty-four, six sixty-eight, or, uh, six seventy-three with respect to the dock. Um, our, it's very possible at that time, or. It's very possible that, um, that, at the time that the docks were installed, our, our code requirements may have been differed in terms of what, whether a permit was needed or not in, in the past.
To DEC.
Yeah, so there's, um, there are, there's two, um, depending on where the location is, um, DEC, um, might require either, um, an Article fifteen or, and/or an Article twenty-four permit for installation of a dock. Um, and there could be potentially an Article four oh four permit from the Army Corps of Engineer, depending on location. Um, and so generally, the town always sends an applicant, when it, at least now, current practice, um, in our department is we send an applicant to, uh, DEC to obtain whatever necessary permitting they need for docks, and then they come back to, um, the town, and more often than not, they need to go to the planning board for an EPOD permit, because most often the whole boundary along the bay is included in, um, in an EPOD.
So were there structures on those properties?
Um, there, there's a structure on.
Six sixty-four and six sixty.
There's a, there is a structure, I believe, on six six four. I think that parcel's, that's also been subject to subdivision. Um, I think six six four or six six two, both of those have the same reference to, uh, fence permits that have been issued. But I think subsequent, that was in two thousand nine that the fence permits were issued. I think subsequent to that, there was this, the subdivision that occurred.
So it could have been a united parcel with a structure and a dock?
Correct.
Alright.
And then they were demolished?
Well, no, the six six two, six six four, and six six eight, there's still, I believe, one residence associated with one of those parcels. I don't know that anything's been demolished on that side.
But it was subdivided after.
Yeah, yeah, so again, not knowing, it's hard to know for sure the, the order of operation and if, you know, what the status, how old the docks are when they were installed dictates what requirements they would have had to meet from, from the state's perspective and from our core.
Did you find anything regarding six seven three?
Uh, no. Nothing on file for that one. No records.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further? Okay. We're gonna close the hearing with respect to this case, and the board will be in recess until, uh, nine forty-five. I would second that, but I do need to make a correction in reference to your idea that that's a backyard, because that is a separate lot, so that's considered the front of that yard. That is, the applicant talked about it being a separate parcel, and that he wasn't gonna make it one parcel.
That's correct. I will accept that modification.
Except that my understanding was that if the applicant was going to put a four-foot fence where he wanted to put it, that no variance was required.
For the height, but not for the setback.
Correct. There's no variance required for height, but he still needs a setback for the distance to the right of way. The other clarification, Mr. Polino, that I just wanted to ask, the applicant submitted as part of his materials a photo of the proposed six-foot fence with the change to the four-foot fence. Does this board want to condition it to be a certain type fence? Wood fence? Chain link fence? Picket fence?
I don't believe that there is any requirement.
Okay.
There is no requirement.
There's no requirement, but he submitted a photo of a six-foot board-on-board fence. I just wanted to make sure that before approving it as.
Well, there is a requirement for a front yard fence, that it be not a solid fence.
This is because this is a vacant lot, I don't believe that that applies.
Correct. I believe the code indicates that a vacant residential lot, it's a four-foot height, and doesn't specify type.
Doesn't specify.
Yeah, because there's no structure to indicate where the front yard might be, because in our code, the front yard is defined by the front foundation line of the structure. So here, you're allowed to have a four-foot enclosure until at such time that a structure might be constructed.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify, I move that we grant the variance, grant the application to allow the setback variance, and that's it.
For a four-foot fence in the location as shown in the application?
Yes.
And that's seconded by Mr. LaPerry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we are all present. Next application relates to 170 Pine Hill Drive. This is a type-two action for secret purposes as well. Does anyone wish to make an application with respect to this application?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we grant the application in part and deny the application in part. I would move that we deny the application for the height variance to allow a six-foot high fence along the proposed area, and I would move that we deny that on the grounds that it is an undesirable change to the neighborhood, it is substantial, and it would have, it's entirely self-created, and there is another means to achieve the benefit of privacy, that is, simply maintaining the forefoot and just allowing it to be over the area that they're looking for. So I would also move that we grant the application to the extent that they're seeking the location of the fence to extend beyond the average setback, the variance of 17 feet, because this is a corner lot that is, in theory, the backyard, so while it is self-created, to the extent they want privacy because of the location of the property, and because it is a backyard/side yard, that there really is no other way for them to have the privacy and to be able to protect the berry bushes without that four-foot fence. The request to have it jettison out beyond the average setback is not substantial, because again, it does seem to be the backyard, and it really, at a four-foot height, does not affect an undesirable change in the neighborhood, and none of these things would have any negative impact on the environment.
Is there a second? I would second that, but I do need to make a correction in reference to your idea that that's a backyard, because that is a separate lot, so that's considered the front of that yard. That is, the applicant talked about it being a separate parcel, and that he wasn't gonna make it one parcel.
That's correct. I will accept that modification.
Except that my understanding was that if the applicant was going to put a four-foot fence where he wanted to put it, that no variance was required.
For the height, but not for the setback.
Correct. There's no variance required for height, but he still needs a setback for the distance to the right of way. The other clarification, Mr. Polino, that I just wanted to ask, the applicant submitted as part of his materials a photo of the proposed six-foot fence with the change to the four-foot fence. Does this board want to condition it to be a certain type fence? Wood fence? Chain link fence? Picket fence?
I don't believe that there is any requirement.
Okay.
There is no requirement.
There's no requirement, but he submitted a photo of a six-foot board-on-board fence. I just wanted to make sure that before approving it as.
Well, there is a requirement for a front yard fence, that it be not a solid fence.
This is because this is a vacant lot, I don't believe that that applies.
Correct. I believe the code indicates that a vacant residential lot, it's a four-foot height, and doesn't specify type.
Doesn't specify.
Yeah, because there's no structure to indicate where the front yard might be, because in our code, the front yard is defined by the front foundation line of the structure. So here, you're allowed to have a four-foot enclosure until at such time that a structure might be constructed.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify, I move that we grant the variance, grant the application to allow the setback variance, and that's it.
For a four-foot fence in the location as shown in the application?
Yes.
And that's seconded by Mr. LaPerry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven votes in favor, no votes opposed, no abstentions, and we all are still present. The next application is 569 Rock Beach Road. This is a type-two action for secret purposes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we grant the variance as applied for, based on the following findings. The application is seeking to add a small amount of additional square footage to the house. That request is minimal, in that they're only seeking to move the property out a total of five feet towards the street, which would be in line with some of the other houses that are closer to the street. Because of the geographic location and the extreme small size of these lots, including on all the terraces, there really is no way to achieve the ability to have a dining room and maintain the 25% maximum lot coverage. The issue is potentially self-created, but again, because these properties, these lots are so small, there really is no way to achieve a livable space on those lots. The request, again, is not substantial, it's five feet and 50 inches, and it will not affect an undesirable change in the neighborhood, and will have no environmental impact.
I second it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven votes in favor, no opposed, we are all still present. Next application for consideration is the property at 67 Sagamore Drive. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an application or a motion with respect to this application? Mr. Chairman, I'll be recusing myself from this one. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
That we approve this request with the following findings. First of all, this is a revision. It's a second trip in, and even though it is a lot of similarity, it comes closer to being within the parameters of the town code. Building that second structure is going to add to the property. They've got the room for it, it's a well-designed structure, and it'll suit their needs, and I think that's one of the reasons you buy property, so you can suit your needs. I also feel that the work being done to the existing garage is good idea to raise that up, so it's level, so that it's redesigned to fit, again, the needs of the family. I believe that they have enough room for these things, it's not like they're up against the property line or that type of thing, it's a substantial room. The, there is, this request is substantial, because it is, we're talking about two structures here, and the needs of each. Nevertheless, they have now come back with this second request, so I think they feel that this is what they need. And I don't think that piece of land is gonna be any kind of a problem for the neighborhood, it's not gonna change the character of it, and it will not have any physical or environmental impact on the area. Yes, they've self-created, because they need to have more storage space there, but also to fix that garage up, too. So that's the basis for my motion.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I still don't see any justification for granting this variance. I mean, the applicant has not explained why they cannot do what they need to do with 900 square feet, other than the fact that it's a lot of stuff. And again, we grant these variances to run with the particular piece of land, and I just haven't heard anything that suggests that this land, I mean, there's a 624-square-foot garage. I've heard nothing to explain why they cannot increase the size of that to 900 square feet. The only thing that I've heard is that if it's higher, it might obstruct the view of the neighbors, but I don't know that that's something we can consider, and the photos themselves suggest that if it's just increased in height, it will be on par with the rest of the property. So I just haven't heard anything to suggest that there's a need for this, other than the need for additional storage.
Well, while I agree with your findings, I do feel that looking at the property, looking at the current condition of the land, comparing it to the other houses, I don't think it's gonna make that big of an impact.
But to that point, just because it won't make a big impact, I mean, it will open the door to other people asking for additional space with no basis, other than it can fit on their property, and I just don't think that's justification for granting the variance.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we all are still present. Next application for consideration is the property at 67 Sagamore Drive. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an application or a motion with respect to this application? Mr. Chairman, I'll be recusing myself from this one. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
That we approve this request with the following findings. First of all, this is a revision. It's a second trip in, and even though it is a lot of similarity, it comes closer to being within the parameters of the town code. Building that second structure is going to add to the property. They've got the room for it, it's a well-designed structure, and it'll suit their needs, and I think that's one of the reasons you buy property, so you can suit your needs. I also feel that the work being done to the existing garage is good idea to raise that up, so it's level, so that it's redesigned to fit, again, the needs of the family. I believe that they have enough room for these things, it's not like they're up against the property line or that type of thing, it's a substantial room. The, there is, this request is substantial, because it is, we're talking about two structures here, and the needs of each. Nevertheless, they have now come back with this second request, so I think they feel that this is what they need. And I don't think that that piece of land is gonna be any kind of a problem for the neighborhood, it's not gonna change the character of it, and it will not have any physical or environmental impact on the area. Yes, they've self-created, because they need to have more storage space there, but also to fix that garage up, too. So that's the basis for my motion.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I still don't see any justification for granting this variance. I mean, the applicant has not explained why they cannot do what they need to do with 900 square feet, other than the fact that it's a lot of stuff. And again, we grant these variances to run with the particular piece of land, and I just haven't heard anything that suggests that this land, I mean, there's a 624-square-foot garage. I've heard nothing to explain why they cannot increase the size of that to 900 square feet. The only thing that I've heard is that if it's higher, it might obstruct the view of the neighbors, but I don't know that that's something we can consider, and the photos themselves suggest that if it's just increased in height, it will be on par with the rest of the property. So I just haven't heard anything to suggest that there's a need for this, other than the need for additional storage.
Well, while I agree with your findings, I do feel that looking at the property, looking at the current condition of the land, comparing it to the other houses, I don't think it's gonna make that big of an impact.
But to that point, just because it won't make a big impact, I mean, it will open the door to other people asking for additional space with no basis, other than it can fit on their property, and I just don't think that's justification for granting the variance.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. That was Mr. Thomas, Mr. Evans. Anyone else? All those against say nay. Any abstentions besides Mr. LaPerry? The motion fails. Two votes in favor, four opposed, one abstention and one absent. Do we want to make a motion, then, to deny the variance?
If we must, I will make the motion.
I think we need to make a motion to deny the variance, then.
I'll make a motion to deny the variance on the findings that this is a substantial request, it's entirely self-created, it will affect the character of the neighborhood, and there's, as it's self-created, I see no justification for it, other than the fact that these applicants themselves, as individuals, have a need for the space. I've heard nothing to suggest that the property itself cannot function within the confines of the code.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I guess I have a problem with us determining their needs for space. I mean, this is a.
The code determines their need for space, and sets it at 900 square feet.
And to grant an area variance, there has to be some showing of a practical hardship that necessitates deviation from the limit that the town code. If the town wants to have 1,500-square-foot garages, they can have them. All the town board needs to do is amend the zoning ordinance to say you can have as many garages as you want on your property, up to 1,500 square feet. They could amend it to just eliminate any limitation on garages at all, and then you could put as many garages as you wanted on your property with as much square feet. But the town board has set the bar at 900 square feet, absent a required showing of practical hardship under the area variance.
So it's not a question of what they'd like, it's what they would desperately need in a hardship case.
Not necessarily desperately need, but what they can justify based on inadequacies that are related to the property, as opposed to the owner.
Okay, well, I obviously disagree with the motion, and I give a lot of credit to them coming back with a well-prepared statement, and I don't have any particular fault with it, so I'm gonna vote against this motion.
Right.
Surprise, surprise.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? And one abstention. So this motion carries. Four votes in favor, two opposed, one abstention, one board member is absent. No, no board members are absent, one abstained. Next application relates to 375 Bayfront Lane. We already moved this from the table. Do you remember who moved to remove it from the table?
I did, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and who seconded that motion?
Mr. Hammond.
Mr. Hammond did, okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would just note that the short environmental assessment form was passed around.
Yes, I saw that. So the short environmental assessment form indicates or requests us to make a determination that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. Is there a motion with respect to the short form environmental assessment form? I'll make a motion, then, that we find that it will not have a, it would not have a significant adverse environmental impact, based upon the fact that there are other docks on the bay, and the existence of a dock by itself is not going to have a significant adverse environmental impact, as distinct and separate from the question of whether the applicant has met the burden of establishing the criteria for a use variance.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? We're all present. Motion carries. Seven in favor, no opposed, no abstention.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to clarify, Attorney, unlisted nug deck.
It's an unlisted action with a negative declaration.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with respect to the application itself, does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? I'll make a motion that we deny the application on the following findings. The applicant has, that it would have a detrimental change to the neighborhood character, in that there are no docks without adjacent accessory structures, as required by the And we're all still present. Application with respect to 302 Orland Road. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an application with respect to this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like...
Or motion with respect to this application?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we grant the variance and approve the application as applied for, based on the following findings. The applicant, this is a minimal request of an additional two feet of height on the fence, but the applicant purchased the property in 1992 with a fence of the same height, so she's simply replacing it. It will have no negative impact on the environment, it will have no negative impact on, it will have no negative change to the actual, to the neighborhood, and it, the fact that she purchased the property with the fence there and is just looking to replace it suggests it's not self-created.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We are all still present. The next application before us pertains to 3317 St. Paul Boulevard. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an application with respect to this application?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application and grant the variance as applied for, based on the following findings. This is a unique corner lot, one of those great corner lots there, so the only way for that corner lot on a very busy street on St. Paul. So the only ability to have safety and to enclose that would be to install the fence. The six-inch variance in height is something that is just standard based on manufacturing. It'll have no impact on the environment, it'll have no detrimental impact on the neighborhood, and the request is minimal in addition to the fact that they're looking for the square footage, it's just to cover that. While we do recognize that these fences don't really appear to be necessarily safe on the top, I don't think there's anything that we, the zoning board, can do within the confines of the code and our powers to really address that. So I'd make a motion that we grant the, grant the variance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We all continue to be present. 52 View Crest Drive. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. This is the application to replace the deteriorating front steps, right?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we grant the request for a variance to replace the crumbling, unsafe entry porch and steps. This is something that needs to be done rather soon, as the applicant at the moment can't even use the steps. It certainly, it's not a substantial change, it's just a change that needs doing. There's no environmental impact except to make it safer. It's not created, it's not self-created, I should say, this is just something that has worn out over time. And as I mentioned, it needs to be replaced as soon as they can do it.
Second.
Any discussion?
Could we put anything in there to make sure it gets stained or painted so it doesn't look like a deck-type thing in the front?
So I'll second with the additional finding that the applicant stated he would be using pressure-treated wood and would be painting it.
All right, so I'll put down that it's to be painted.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We all are still present. That concludes the items on our agenda for decision tonight. We are adjourned.